It being a little after 7:00 p.m., let's open the Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals for March 6, 2024. First on the agenda is Kushman Farms LLC. Actually, all in favor to open the meeting?
Aye.
Can I get a second, I guess?
Oh, a second.
You could second. Very good. Take it away, Moesha.
There was a public hearing. A public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200, and Zoom on Wednesday, November 1st, 2023, at 7:05 p.m. to hear the petition of Kushman Farms LLC, 33 Kushman Drive, Kingston, Mass. 02364, to request a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, to allow construction of three apartment buildings proposed to build 162 units of rental housing per the project on approximately 11 acres of land located off Marion Drive and on Kushman Drive per the site in Kingston per the municipality with an associated community building, access road, parking, stream crossing, utilities, and stormwater features on assorted parcels along St. Thomas Street, including off Pleasant Street and Pleasant Street, map 66, lots 29, 32, 33, 35, 37, 38, 40, 41, 42, 47, and map 75, lots 5 and 7. Mass housing ID number 1159. Plot plan by Conoco Engineering and Scientist, Bridgewater, Massachusetts, drawn by surveyor Timothy S. Buddha, PLS dated September 28, 2023. Comprehensive permit plans by Conoco Engineers and Scientists, plans drawn by engineer Damian J. Demitrik, P.E., dated October 2, 2023.
Make a motion to open it?
Make a motion to open.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Make a motion to continue. They're asking for when?
April 3, 2024.
All right, so they'll be... That's what they wanted, but they'll be last fiddle? All right, very good. Make a motion to continue Kushman Farms LLC to April 3, 2024 at 7:15. Can I get a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Next up. Perfect. Read the notice, please. Thank you.
A public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200 on Wednesday, March 6, 2024, at 7:05 p.m. Applicant Fred Tonsberg, 60 Country Club Way, map 74, Lot 4, seeks a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals per Section 5.2, Table of Uses, Kingston Zoning Bylaw, page 33, in order to construct a maintenance building for the existing country club site, the existing country club. Site plan for proposed maintenance building at Indian Pond Country Club, Inc., prepared by Joseph Webby Jr. and Richard Di Benedictus of Webby Engineering Associates, Inc., dated July 11, 2023. Retaining wall location and note plan, Civil Connection LLC, Gilmington, New Hampshire, dated November 29, 2023.
Motion to open the hearing?
I move to open the hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So up on the agenda is 60 Country Club Way. Step right out. This is a new special permit.
Hold on a second. He's trying to...
Just turn on your microphone, please.
Oh, makes you have a green dot, sorry.
Thank you.
Testing?
There you go.
for a special permit relating to the maintenance building, storage building, that has been discussed on two prior occasions when we were originally seeking a modification of the special permit, which after Town Council voiced an opinion that it was questionable as to whether or not we had standing to seek the modification, we withdrew the application for the modification and filed a full application for a special permit. This all relates to a country club that was given a special permit back in 1998, and it's built... The country club is built within a subdivision known as Indian Pond Estates, Roman numeral number four. The history of this particular neighborhood and development is set forth in detail in the decision of Tenzar versus Indian Pond Country Club, a decision of the Supreme Judicial Court. And what I'm going to say is exactly what the SJC found when they decided that case. This neighborhood was conceived as a mixed country club, golf course, residential neighborhood. It's a declaration of covenants and easements that was filed with the Plymouth Registry of Deeds in 1999, which set forth that the developer was retaining the right to build a country club, a golf course, and related facilities, including a maintenance building. And that declaration is binding on every single resident of Indian Pond Country Club, although they don't seem to act like it is. The declaration...
Okay, I'll hold you for one second just to keep... I'm sure you're aware of it, Attorney Fleming. As you know, we have four board members here.
I see four, yep.
Yeah, so for a special permit, you'll need a super majority, so you need at least four.
I need three.
No, you need four. So I'm just giving you that heads up. You're welcome to continue. We have the Mullins Rule, so people can always watch or read the minutes, but I'm just giving you that heads up. You're welcome to move forward.
Okay.
I'm just saying you're requiring a unanimous vote of today's vote, if we voted today. But moving forward currently, since you're opening a brand-new special permit, these are the first set of eyes. You have four out of five of a five-board member. You'll need a super majority, meaning you'll need four out of five, unless you get other people to watch, which they should, on the Mullins Rule, when we only have two other members.
Okay, but you...
I'm just giving you a heads up. You can continue.
The procedure would be to at least request that the fifth person view the hearing?
Yes, I mean, we would hope that both the fifth or the sixth would watch it so that we'd have a full vote. My point is going forward currently, at this point juncture, since you're opening a brand-new special permit, you have four sets of eyes on it, so you have four members. So you have to get a unanimous vote, unless moving forward, someone, a fifth member or a sixth member uses it. Either way, we're only going to use five members. Marsh, being an associate, has moved up, so whoever the fifth member would be, would be the fifth member of a complete board if there was ever a vote taken. And if those two didn't catch up with the Mullins Rule, the four of us would be the voting members. So you would then need a super majority, which would then mean unanimous. I'm just... I'm sure you're aware of it. I'm just making you aware of it before you continue on and get too far ahead.
Okay, well...
Who? On this one? All right, so let me have one more member. I thought he recused himself on Kushman.
I thought he was... He recused, was... Take it away.
They drew it, but he didn't.
I thought that was Kushman.
No.
Oh, okay. So one more member. So Mr. Lane would be your fifth member, if he watches and catches up with the Mullins Rule.
Okay, well, I think we want to proceed with this anyway because...
I'm just giving you that heads up. So you're welcome to continue with...
Well, I will tell you this. I don't understand why the special permit wouldn't be granted, but, you know, that's just my own personal opinion.
Yep. I'm just, like I said, I'm getting ahead of it before you get too far ahead.
So in any event, what we've provided you at this point in time is we've provided you with engineering plans showing where the location is going to be. Since the original plans were filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals, we have located the building 50 feet... moved the building 50 feet closer to the country club. In other words, 50 feet further away from the immediate abutting property owner. By doing so, we've accomplished a few things, but perhaps the most important one is it has reduced the need for a very high retaining wall, and as a result, the overall height of the building, as it appears as it will be built in the parking lot, is lower and won't be as obvious or so striking to the neighbors.
What is that height?
Well, the height is 47 feet, but it's lower in the ground because of the grading of the parcel of land that we're dealing with. But it's not... It's 47 feet, and if you... We've submitted plans.
You don't have it on the plans.
Pardon?
You don't have it on the plans.
The elevations are shown on this plan.
Show me where it says 47 feet, and I'll believe you.
35.
Hmm?
The last one.
It's not written on my plan. Wait, wait, wait. If I can read it, I might need your glasses.
Re-elevations on this plan?
35. All right, there is a 35 right there.
35, it's written on the plan.
It's on there. It's about the size of a pinhead.
Tiny as a sponge.
It's 35. It says 35.
Okay. So we moved it, in part based on feedback from the neighbor, and in part because it actually probably makes more sense for us. There had been questions about, okay, what is this storage facility or maintenance building actually going to be used for? And we are short of detail on that. So we have submitted to you again what I call a plan anyways, which shows exactly what's going to be stored in the storage maintenance building. And what it shows you is on the second floor, basically it will be all electric carts that are used in connection, used by the golfers on the golf course. On the first floor drawing, we've identified the types of equipment that will be kept within the building. They include items like blowers, rough mowers, articulators, and various machinery that's used in connection with just the regular, ordinary maintenance of the golf course, used by all golf course operators, nothing out of the ordinary.
I have a question. On that picture you're looking to on your right, there are electric carts and six passenger carts outside of the building.
Those are to show you what we have.
Okay.
They're not going to be there.
All right.
There are other locations. Until this building is actually laid out and we try to fit the stuff in, you know, we don't know exactly for sure whether it's going to be 60, 62, but it's just going to be golf carts with charging units.
Did you...
Out here.
Did you pass that by the fire department for charging up electric carts indoors?
Yes.
So the fire department signed off on that, so require that with these...
Once they see the finished plans, they'll sign off. They're not going to sign off on conceptual plans.
Well, you're going to have to sign off prior to us having anything, because if you have to put a fire suppressant system in...
You don't have to open it.
Even with these new electric cars?
Yes.
Do you have a letter stating that you talked to them?
I...
Do you have a letter stating that you talked to them?
If they have, we'll get a letter.
All right, that's easy. That's all I want.
I talked to the deputy.
All I want is a letter. It's because I just came up recently with something else, and they're not really... The battery issue, stupid battery issue.
Just to point out as a matter of clarification, on the first floor level, you will see outside of the building other equipment that's identified. That's the equipment that we don't think we're going to be able to fit in the building, but we're not sure. If it doesn't fit in the building, it will be stored up past the... near the end of the driving area, out of sight of anybody in the neighborhood. And that's where anything that we can't fit in the building is going to go. Now, showing that these conceptual layouts, essentially what we're going to do is on the second floor, there will be potentially three doorways that will come in right off the level of the golf course onto the second floor of the building, and they will go in and they will be parked as shown, presumably as shown on this diagram. Diagram shows a door on the second level, which will be the last... first one out, last one in of the golf carts. So the idea is all the carts will basically just be going in through one door, and it will be towards the back, not visible to anybody in the neighborhood. With respect to the first floor, where the larger equipment is located, there will be a door going out towards the... towards Country Club Way, and the equipment will go out that way and make a right-hand turn, and then another right-hand turn and go out there and go through the parking lot onto the country club. The whole idea, the way the building has been designed, is to make it fit with, in general, as far as you can fit a maintenance and storage facility with the style in the neighborhood, and in fact, with the style of the country club building. And we think we've accomplished that. I know there are going to be a lot of people who are going to express their opinions about this tonight, but I can tell you that the direct abutter across from where this building will be located has informed Indian Pond Country Club that he has absolutely no objection to the plans as proposed. So the question is, if we look at the criteria that you're supposed to use in analyzing whether or not you can grant a special permit as set forth in your bylaws, you know, the first and most important criteria, as far as I'm concerned, is that the use, as developed by what's requested by the special permit, will or will not adversely affect the neighborhood. So what we have right now is we have a decrepit, old, inadequate, storage and maintenance building that's an eyesight, admittedly. And it's so small that we can't fit, that Indian Pond Country Club cannot fit a lot of its equipment inside. So we think the neighborhood would be positively affected if we built a nice-looking, two-story, new, storage maintenance building and stopped using the old one, presumably when the lease expires, or when Mr. Fred W. Tonsberg chooses to evict us. And overall, if you ask that question, I just... I don't understand how the answer is anything but yes, it will improve the neighborhood. It's a big improvement, and you'll hear from people tonight here, but you know, the neighbors, a number of the neighbors in Indian Pond Country Club have a private association, and they have a Facebook page. And they post things on the Facebook page, which they... you know, I think it's supposed to be private, but the comments on the Facebook page are, "This is a great idea. This is a big improvement."
On Facebook page.
You're looking at the room.
You need to talk about the girl.
No, no.
As usual, you know, you should have some courtesy at a public hearing. I just... I don't get it down here.
So you're allowed to disbarage.
Hey, this isn't a free-for-all. Thank you. You can have your chance to talk up front. Continue.
I'm not disparaging anybody. I have the email. So why don't I read them?
Speak on the mic.
Bob Boyd. "I think this is a good thing. Finally, a true maintenance building."
Does he have an address?
He's... Doesn't have an address on his email. I'm sure he's on your butters list. "I day..." I think you were supposed to say... I was trying to say "state." "We all show up in support of the guy. Haves at least half the roads for none." Bob Roundtree.
Does he have an address?
Mr. Roundtree is, I believe, on...
Country Club Way.
Country Club Way.
Flat Pond, Pond, New York.
"After speaking with Fred Tonsberg two years ago, my understanding is he wants to build the maintenance building into the hill of the back of the parking lot. Certainly, a freestanding metal building in the parking lot to the left of the clubhouse would be unacceptable. Such a building would be a distinct disadvantage to the club when promoting wedding receptions parties. I would suggest that we support a design that would be in keeping with the neighborhood with the following conditions. Rebuild the road from Eagle Drive continuing past the parking lot on either side of the club. Restore the existing maintenance house to the standards in the neighborhood and discourage storage equipment in the back of the building. Accept responsibility for the maintenance of both sides of the main entrance in the condition the areas are currently in. Extend maintenance of the left side of the country club at the entrance to at least 10 feet off the road to Eagle Drive." So let's just get to the elephant in the room. People don't want to give him anything, Indian Pond Country Club, Fred Tonsberg, because the roads in the subdivision have not received a second wearing coat. That responsibility is the responsibility of High Pines Corp., not Indian Pond Country Club. They think that he can just go, I don't know, go to a bank, borrow money in a bank. The lender for Indian Pond Country Club is going to give the country club money to repair roads to the responsibility of a separate corporation? You know, the question of finishing the roads has been litigated for probably 15 years. The town has unnecessarily forced Mr. Tonsberg to defend cases in the land court, in the Superior Court. The town has taken away $500,000 in funding that he had from a potential developer of the Virginia Davis property by deciding to buy the property for its own wastewater facility. The town has turned down numerous offers from High Pines Corporation to put additional funds into escrow for purposes of making sure that there was adequate security to try to build the roads. Funny, huh? And it was turned down. So are you entitled to deny a special permit to build a maintenance building which would improve the neighborhood because a separate legal entity, High Pines Corporation, has not yet finished the second coat of pavement in the subdivision? And I submit that the answer to that question is no. You have the criteria that are in your bylaws. It's what you have to be satisfied with. And I'll read them. I mean, we can read them and discuss what isn't satisfied. But basically, what it all boils down to is, can any reasonable person say that this nice, new maintenance building isn't better than the old decrepit one? I mean, if you want to say, no, the other one, the old decrepit one is better, then I guess we lose. But again, going back to Section 10.7 of your bylaws. A, this is what you consider. Will the use as developed and operated adversely affect the neighborhood? And we say no. The neighborhood is not simply a residential neighborhood. The neighborhood is, as the Supreme Judicial Court has spoken to, is a residential golf course community. The developed facilities adequately provide for all proposed and appropriate operations of the use. We say it does. We could have made it bigger, but I don't think it would have been... I don't think anyone would have been happy with a bigger facility. Mr. Tonsberg believes that Indian Pond Country Club needs probably a 120-foot-wide storage facility to put everything in, but he reduced the size because if you get up that big, it's just not going to fit in as well with the neighborhood. The site is an appropriate location for such use, structure, or site condition. It's on the golf course. The golf course is a permitted use. A maintenance building is an accessory building for almost any golf course. Access to the site is over streets and through areas appropriate for the type of vehicle involved. There's no additional access. The only people who get access to this building are employees. They already travel over the roads. There's no additional burden on the roads going to be created by the special permit requested. Access by vehicles required for the use will not create traffic volumes greater than existing street capacity. There's not going to be any existing increased volume. Site design and use may not create adverse impacts to the surrounding areas off-site. It improves the effects on the area by replacing the old, dilapidated, maintenance building. Potential off-site adverse effects must be identified and mitigated during development to ensure compatibility with surrounding areas. That's why we have a nice design, an attractive building. That's why we moved the building 50 feet away from the neighbor's property. And I should add, by moving it 50 feet, we eliminated the need to have a retaining wall on the side of the neighbor's property, which potentially could be something that he would object to. And I think, as you pointed out, because of the elevation during one of the hearings, there was a question as to whether you would need some kind of fall protection, given the elevations on that side. It will be flat now. There will not be any elevation. So it's not like... We're not trying to accommodate the effect on, like, the immediately abutting neighbors, but again, I have to point out, when they bought their property, the Declaration of Covenants and Easements, which establishes a common scheme for this entire development, was on record. They're bound by it. It said that they were... It said specifically that the developer had the right to build a maintenance building on Lot 74 dot dash four, and that's what's being done now. Going back to factors that should be identified. The use as developed shall not create negative impacts on public services or infrastructure, including but not limited to municipal sewage system, public ways, public water supply, pedestrian sidewalks, and footpaths. It doesn't have any effect, but I would point out that we have... The sewer or wastewater department has provided us with a letter. It's in the package that we submitted, and it says that we can connect to the town sewer system.
I'm going to say that. I have the opposite of that.
What's that?
Mine's... I'm getting a request for review from them stating that they would like to know your flow rates. I was just reading it five seconds ago.
That will establish how much we have to pay them.
Right.
And they said that that can be worked out once the project is underway. And they said that that can be worked out once the project is underway.
They, they're requesting it so they can, they can, they want to know what your facility is going to basically be doing so they could figure out what they can allow you. It looks like you guys haven't given anything. They don't have a number at all. They're requesting a number from you guys. I'm reading it right here.
Well, I submit this stuff to the zoning board of appeals. And that's not my understanding, that I can directly communicate with all the town boards.
Well, you're welcome to get a letter stating that you can hook up the sewer. "We would require that we are provided details on the planned usage to assign Title V capacity to the project as this project moves forward. The water source for the building would require meter to be able to bill out for consumption and billing for wastewater usage." And that's another thing, are you able to get, hook up to water?
Water department hasn't responded to us. You've got a moratorium in town?
Yeah, I know we do.
Okay. Well, don't we drill a well?
Well, we got to see if we can drill in the wellhead.
What's that?
So water is a question mark, and then sewer is a question mark. I know you want to hook up the sewer, I just want to make sure that they're kosher with it.
Do you have water to your current maintenance building?
We do.
And do you know, okay, do you know how many gallons per day?
We actually use?
Yeah.
Few. Few.
It's going to be a different building.
I mean, we can provide that information to you, but... Let me go forward and then I'll turn it over to you.
So we're getting a letter from the water department, a letter from the sewer department. It's simple. That should be really simple.
Okay, well, and the other question is, that has been raised, is are we going to actually put a bathroom in? That's, and that's, that depends, we got to be sure that we can get water. So we're trying to figure out, we would prefer to put one in, but what happens right now is all these people who will ever be in this facility use the employee bathroom in the country club.
It's up to you.
So, that's the story.
I'm just saying, all we do is require a letter, because that's why, I mean, I know you're doing preliminary pictures and whatnot, but you have no bathroom in the current layout, you just have carts. It's up to you guys, just to get, it has to be a little more concrete. Yeah, just a little more concrete.
We'll provide you with that, we'll get the letters.
There's no stairs in this building, there's no, it's just a, very consensual.
There are no stairs.
You're welcome to, yeah.
No stairs to the upstairs. Do you think there's a reason for it? We're not using it. It's strictly, this is the upper level. If you people don't have a plan, I have copies that I can give you right now.
I only have this, this is all I have.
Okay, that's what I'm going to give you, copies of those, okay. This is the upper level. You enter from this end, and you exit from that end with the golf carts only. Nobody goes up or downstairs. That's all it's used for. The golf carts is, on the golf course, the path is existing. They drive up, drive the carts up the path, either in this entrance, or we use this as an entrance, either or. We won't know that until we get these carts in the building. That will be decided once the building is up. We're trying to fit all of our carts in there. The existing building cannot fit the carts in there, they have to be outside. The lower level, this is all equipment that I do have available. Right now, all this equipment cannot go into the building that's existing. If we can't get all of this equipment into the building, I've developed a new area halfway down the driving range, and anybody would like to go down to take, view it, I'd be more than glad to drive them down. We're creating that area in there for any vehicles that are right now outside. Those will all be in that area. Two reasons. Where we are now, it would be inconvenient for my people to have the vehicles down that other end, which we could park them down there, but we want to get them away from the neighbors, number one, which is a big problem right now. And believe me, every day, I have an argument with some of my people to get this stuff that's outside inside, if available. I've talked to the immediate, about the immediate neighbor across the street, personally. Actually, I've talked to both of them. I've talked to Mrs. Hoopa. She's against it. There's a long conversation about that. We don't have to get into it. But I, when she bought the lot for me, she was living two doors up the street. And I said to her, Debbie, do you really want to buy this lot next to a commercial building? She says, I love the neighborhood. I want to stay here. I sold her the lot. There was some controversy about the lot. I said to her, you got a problem, somebody's telling you stories. And we know, I know who it was telling her the stories. If you want me to take my excavator over there and dig down to permeable soil to make sure that there was nothing buried here, my son went over there with the excavator, says, Debbie, you tell me where you want me to dig. Nothing was buried on that lot. We went down to permeable soil. I also said to her, this building across the street is not going to change, Debbie. I love the neighborhood. I want to stay here. I sold her the lot. She built her house next to a commercial building. Her next-door neighbor on, would be her left-hand side, I personally talked to him. He thinks that this building can only improve the neighborhood. Has absolutely no reason why it wouldn't be built. As far as water sewer, we've taken into consideration. The water department, if they don't want to give me water, that's no problem. I don't use enough water up there to have it be worthwhile. I'll drill a well. I've talked to the health department, I can get a well on that site. As far as the fire department is concerned, I've talked to the deputy chief, we don't need a sprinkler system in the building for the way we're building it.
Yeah, I just want a letter.
Okay. I think there is a letter on that. And if not, he'd be more than glad to give you one. No problem. The board, as far as the sewer is concerned, I haven't personally talked to him, but John seems to believe the letter that they sent him, which I haven't read, allows me, they want me to tie into the sewer. I have no problem tying into the sewer and paying that fee. The amount of sewers that's going to come out of that building would be less than a studio apartment. The people that have been, worked for me on the maintenance side for the last 15 or 20 years, in the country club, coming in the back door, they don't have to go through the club at all, they walk down the corridor. I have an employee's bathroom, male and female. They like to go in there because I keep it up on a daily basis. I have no problem, and it'll be actually easier for them to use it now with the new building versus having to come off the course and go to the older building. As far as if the, if the, sewer department doesn't want me to tie into the sewer, no problem. I already, on my plans, have designed a septic system.
That's what I was looking for, I don't see it, I see drainage system.
Yeah, we've designed, on the big plans, Webby has designed a septic system. So, if we don't get the sewer, we'll put the septic system in, either or, either or. I would prefer tying into the sewer, even though it's going to cost a small fortune, because I, we build our own septic systems. As a matter of fact, I don't know if the people in this room know it, and one of the problems that I'm having with the town, with the roads, is the town, I spent $1,125,000 to build the largest leaching system for the town sewer in New England. Camp dressed for McKee, that designed the system, was in California, accepting an award for the best septic system in the country at the time. How do I know? You laugh, Freddie, you know it. Yeah. Got to the point where the young lady that was the secretary for the town, the selectman at the time, asked me to come down because she knew all the problems that we were having at the time prior to building the system. They said I couldn't do it. I, myself, and personally, anybody would like to see the pictures, I probably have 200 or 300. You wouldn't believe the system that's under that driving range. You wouldn't believe it. They were, they accepted an award, Camp dressed for McKee, in California, it actually hit a national magazine. The young lady, there was the secretary at the time for the selectman, wanted me to come down, didn't want to tell me what it was, wanted me to come down and see it. Couldn't believe it. I made one mistake, I didn't get a copy of it. But, it's a matter of record. So, as far as the sewer is concerned, no problem, I'll tie into it. As a matter of fact, we did the majority of the sewer on Country Club Way because the contractor at the time refused to come on private property. He didn't have a contract for it. So I said to the sewer department, which is Ollie DiMascino, he actually asked me to do it. He said, Fred, can you do the digging, we'll put the pipe in. Better still, I said, I don't, if you're having a problem, what we'll do is we'll make a deal with one of the contractors in the town. They can put the pipe in, I'll still do the digging for you. So, all, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm wandering off point here. I mean, I did read the thing from the water department, and it does give the impression that they need to know a little bit more about your project, and there would be a fee for you to tie in. That does imply that.
The fee at this stage?
It sounds like you're more than willing to pay them whatever they want. So, that's good to know. I think you've answered his question.
So, I mean, if there are any other questions, I mean, it'd probably be a lot easier for me to answer them than have the lawyer answer them.
I have a couple of questions. How, how does this new building compare square footage-wise with the original maintenance building?
Don't quote me on this, but the building that's in there now, I can hold 62 carts, golf carts, below, underneath. The new building will hold 80. Right, which I own 80. I own 80 golf carts. We use 80 golf carts.
But the new building is going to also house a lot of other equipment, correct?
Lawn equipment on the low, on the lower level.
But that's part of the square footage of the building?
Right now, the building that I'm in, the upper level, would hold, holds about maybe 30% of the equipment that I own. The majority of the stuff which...
70% of the equipment?
70% of the equipment that I own, physically own, can be housed presently.
In the existing maintenance building?
Presently, in the existing building.
Along with 60 golf carts.
We got to get this straight. The lower level is only used for lawn equipment.
Of the existing?
The new building, the new building.
Lawn equipment, equipment.
So this is the new building you're speaking of?
The lower level, this level here, this level here with the three doors.
And it can house?
That's the lower level. That, the three doors are to make it easy for the equipment to go in and to store properly. If I don't put the three doors in, now all of a sudden, when you get this equipment in there, you're going around and trying to maneuver around the stuff. The purpose of, the purpose of the, the three doors is to make rows for this equipment to go in straight. When they leave, and it's not, they don't all leave the same time or the same day. Certain pieces of equipment only cut the grass every day. Other pieces of equipment cut it, as Paul will tell you, twice a week. Other pieces, once a week.
So it's specifically designed to accommodate and meet your needs for mowing the grass?
Approximately 70% of the equipment that I own. Right now, it's a, it's a sight, it's an awful sight. It's an awful sight. I'll be the first to admit it. It's an awful sight.
So you're going to put it, all of it's going to be inside now?
I'm trying to get at least 70% more equipment stored than I'm able to do right now.
And right now, you only can store 30%?
Approximately, you don't hold me to that, could be 30 or 40, I'd be more than glad to show you the area.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the size differential.
The existing building...
Existing building, and we have this new building.
The existing building, we, we store the golf carts underneath. At present, it holds 64 of them. The upper level has three garage doors and an area for maintenance, which is a third door, a fourth door. Those three doors are only able to house two pieces of equipment because of the depth of the building. It's only, let's say it's 30 feet wide. The new building is three times that wide. I can house probably 70% more equipment in the new building than I can in the old building.
And who owns the new, is going to own the new building?
Indian Pond, the new building is totally built on land owned by Indian Pond Country Club, solely.
That's the golf course.
Lots, which is the golf course, which is Lot 74 dash four.
And...
Ma'am, sorry, can you make sure your microphone went out?
Oh, I'm sorry. And was it High Pines Corporation that transferred its rights to IPCC?
No. Indian Pond Country Club bought the land from High Pines Corporation. Like every single lot in there.
All right, and high, and so there is no longer a High Pines Corporation?
Yes, there is, still High Pines Corporation exists.
And the owners of that corporation are the same people that own the IPCC, right? So they're one and the same?
Yes.
Is that same for High Pines LLCs?
You know, when it gets to, when it gets to the legal end of it, could you please ask John that?
But there's no diversity. I mean, it's the identical board...
Again, if we're talking about, if you're talking about the legality of the land or the lots or whatever, I want to, you know, defer to John. John's been with me since 1984. He knows more about Indian Pond, High Pines Corporation, signature builders, the LLCs than I do.
The only reason I raise this is that you made a point about there being an issue regarding the roads in the development, and that that seemed to be a sore spot between the owners of IPCC and High Pines Corporation and the town, and maybe some of the...
IPCC has absolutely nothing to do with the roads, nothing.
Well, except the people who want to go to the country club have to drive over those roads to get to it.
That's correct.
So, it does benefit greatly from that road structure.
Again, I'm going to defer any questions about that to John, please.
I don't, I'm just going to move on. I'll end my inquiry here. That's it.
You continue. I don't know where you left off.
Anybody else have any questions?
Kevin?
No.
Bob?
Just a few comments, I guess. Seems to be some internal conflict between the residents and Indian Pond, and it sounds a little diluted between who owns what.
I'm sorry, sorry, I can't hear you.
It seems a little diluted between who owns High Plains and Indian Pond, and the residents are mad. You know, and it sounds like the road issues have always been a problem, we've heard that many a time. Somebody should fix the damn roads to help the people in, in living there. The existing building, is it going to be demoed, you call it decrepit, is it going to be demoed, is it going to be painted? Is it gonna be painted? Is it just gonna sit there?
I, I don't own it, sir.
Again, I, I, just, just let, let me finish. So, the internal conflict you seem to have is, I wouldn't say self-inflicted, but it's, it's, it's been talked about for a while. Bottom line is here is, if you have to get a special permit, we're the zoning board. I don't care about the roads. I don't care about that you put this great system in for, for the water. You're here for a special permit approval and you could probably get it. It has nothing to do with the roads, but it has to do to me with the water department, the fire department, the building permit. If you can get the other departments in this town, I'll give, I have no problem giving you the special permit with the, with the contingency that the other parts of this town sign off on what you're doing. You guys can have the civil war down there at Indian Pond, it's not gonna affect me. Or, I don't think it affects the special permit. The bottom line is, we're the zoning board. Excuse me, but all the other bull stuff that's been going on in these meetings has nothing to do with the special permit. My opinion.
You know something? I think you and I are on the same wavelength. I'm 100% behind you on that.
Is that a threat?
That's, I'm 100% behind you.
So, I, that's, that's-
You tell us what you, and here's my problem. I have an architect involved in this building. She's at a point where she can't go any further because we don't know what we can build. What we're looking for here, the building, the size of the building, the, the, what it looks like and location of the building.
Understood, but maybe if, if somebody, if someone would fix the roads, I think a lot of this would go away. So, you, you, ownership, I mean, you guys own, I don't, I don't care who, but what company owns it, you guys own the road for gosh's sake. Do something about it. That's my opinion again, but just, I think a lot of, a lot of aggravation would go away if the roads got fixed.
Yeah. I'm, like I said, when, anything when it comes to that, the legality, you know, let John speak to it.
No, I just wanna make one more point, which is with respect to the actual building itself. I mean, we haven't, I think there was a misapprehension and maybe it was our fault that we didn't wanna work with Mr. Silver. In terms of, at, at, if we get to the stage where we're looking for a foundation permit, we're gonna go to Mr. Silver and we're gonna get his approval or else it isn't gonna happen. When we, when we go to apply for a building permit, we'll take his input into account and, and do what we need to get his approval and we'll work with him. You know, we don't, we're not insistent on, on, on anything other than we'd like to make it fit into the neighborhood and we'd like to make it store as much of the equipment as we, as we can so we can get it off, off of the golf course. So, that's, if you have any, any other questions? You've got lots of people who I think are gonna wanna talk.
I, I'm sorry.
Some of the suggestions from the staff, the town staff, would be to limit the hours of construction of the building. You're amenable to that?
If I could get it to work seven to four, it'd be lucky. It's more like eight to two these days.
Well, they're saying eight to 5:30, so that's a win for you.
Seven to four is normal working out. We don't work after that. We just, normally don't work Saturdays.
Use the microphone, please. Use the microphone if you're gonna talk, please. As far, as far as construction, we work basically seven to four, five days a week. We don't work Saturdays or Sundays on, on the construction side. Unless it's an emergency or unless there's, we may have to, you know, I, it's, it's almost impossible to do, to get people to work Saturdays and Sundays.
In other words, the, that condition that she's discussing is, is not a problem?
Yeah.
That would not be a problem.
No.
And a municipal lien certificate showing that-
I'm sorry?
A municipal lien certificate.
Yeah, well-
Showing it on all your taxes forms.
Yeah, we have absolutely no problem with that.
No problem with that. And one of them was a completion of the construction of Country Club Way. Is recommended as a discussion point.
Well, that's, that's, that's the legal issue here. I can't tell you how much I disagree with you in terms of-
Use the microphone, please.
I disagree with the assertion that High Pines Corp. and Indian Pond Country Club are one and the same. If Indian Pond Country Club went to its lender and said, I want half a million dollars to finish the roads, the lender would laugh at us. They file separate financial statements, they file separate tax returns. They are completely separate legal entities. They pay separate taxes. High Pines Corp. still owns lots in the subdivision and it pays taxes on those lots.
And, and, and right it should. I mean, I'm just saying from, it, it gives rise to the appearance of impropriety, that your back scratches their back and vice versa and you kinda hide behind each other, you know, to, 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 to duck out on responsibilities and, you know?
Well, someone has tried 90 jury cases or jury wave cases, argued 20 appeals before the Supreme Judicial Court and the Appeals Court and the Federal Appeals Court on issues of real estate and easements. And they all think it's funny. They, they think that, you know, knowing what you're talking about doesn't make a difference. But I can tell you, you know, piercing a corporate veil and trying to hold someone responsible doesn't work in this situation.
I, I'm not trying to do any of that. I'm just making, as another board member did, a suggestion, you know, that, the solution to a lot of the-
It's two and a half miles of road. We maintain it.
No.
And you know, I, I, every time I come down here, I make it a point to drive around Indian Pond Country Club. Every time.
The mic.
Great. And you haven't seen bad roads. Where I live, the roads are terrible.
Well, last I knew, you had to do that.
Let's not go down-
There's two separate issues.
Pardon?
You guys did not plow the roads this year or sand the roads this year, so you did not maintain them. I know that for a fact.
We didn't stop maintaining them.
You didn't plow them and you didn't sand them?
Never have.
We never have plowed those roads.
Well, that would be part of maintenance, wouldn't it?
No, it isn't. No, no, it isn't.
No.
That's required by, that's required by the state and the fire department. Any road in this state that has more than three houses on it, the town is required to plow it.
No, the town is forced, not required, it is forced.
No.
Because, because, because the person who-
The laws that-
The privately owned road is not being properly maintained.
Okay, just so, this is, I'm not gonna argue the point, I'm just gonna tell you what's happened.
Okay.
Okay? When the winter season approaches-
Mr. Bazler.
High Pines Corp. goes to Mr. Bazler and says, who's in charge of the, the roads, and says, what do you need to have done so that you can plow the roads? And whatever he tells us to do, we do. That may not be sufficient in your minds, but that's what we do. So, it's some maintenance, maybe you don't think it's enough maintenance, but it's some maintenance. And there are, you know, there are a lot of people in Indian Pond Estates number four. And if those, those roads weren't plowed, they'd be very upset.
Well, I think the, is the rule in town, the road has to be accepted for the town to then maintain any of the roadways, correct?
No.
No?
No, you, there's another way that, that the town can agree to, if they-
You mean the town will be forced into it because in order to maintain health and security for its own citizens, it has to do someone else's job, in other words?
No, I don't think, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna get too picky about this, but as I understand it, generally speaking, there is a provision, there's a provision for how the town can agree to-
The town has never agreed. It's never been voted on.
I know it hasn't.
So, what agreement can you have if a town has ever voted on it? In, in other words, Mr. Bazler's being forced into a situation he has to basically accomplish because there's more than three houses. So, that would mean every 40 B in town or any driveway with three or more houses on it is required to be plowed by the town, but going by your statement.
Is required? I didn't say it.
You just said that, you know, sometimes the town has to pick up because if there's more than three houses on any street-
I didn't say that. I'm sorry. I did not say that. Mr. Tonsberg said that. So, I just like appreciate that-
Okay, I agree. Okay. Agreed there.
I, I'm just trying to be straight with you.
I am, I am. I'm just aggravated by it, sorry.
So-
All right.
There you have it. Now, I think it's time for you to move.
All right. Anyone?
Undone.
Kevin?
No more questions.
I don't think anywhere that the, there's no fixing of the roads or anything like that. I don't think that's going anywhere.
Bob?
I just don't-
Excuse me, sir. Could you repeat that?
I-
I said that this conversation, fixing the roads, isn't going anywhere.
Bob?
The legality of different companies and splitting hairs of maintenance, I just think, who owns the, who, just, if the roads are a mess, guys, get together, figure a way to do it. Don't, I'm not saying you're hiding behind the legality of different things, but come to an appeasement with the people who have been complaining about this for the longest time and, and just do it. I, I don't, somebody, you gotta be able to figure a way to fix the damn road. That's my opinion. But again, it has nothing to do with the special permit. It has to do with the contentiousness of the people who are living there and that seems to be their big problem. So, you guys gotta come to some sort of détente to figure this out. If not, then it has nothing to do with the special permit as far as I'm concerned.
Done. Bob?
Done.
I'm done. All right. Anyone from the public wanna speak for or against? State your name, address. Let's get going.
George Egan, I'm at 131 Country Club Way. This is comical, in, in my opinion. The, going to the roads, I'll jump on there right away because we were just talking about the plowing. I own a landscaping company in Plymouth and I plow roads in the Pine Hills. Pine Hills Development pays contractors to plow roads for 3,000 homes. So, whatever the discussion about not having to maintain roads with homes of three or more is, is not, not correct, in my, I plow Abbe Hill Estates in Kingston and this town, 40 homes. So, there's that. The condition of the roads in, in, on Country Club Way and in Indian Pond, everybody can agree atrocious. Potholes everywhere. We can't even drive down the roads without swerving around. Can't, my, my six-year-old little girl can't ride her bike on the roads without hitting a pothole. And it's just, you know, it's, it's a, it's a condition that nobody seems to, to care about fixing. So, why, why do we give this any thought when clearly it's the same, it's the same owners that are putting this together than, than own the roads? High Pines Corp. and Indian Pond are the same owners. They said, they said it themselves. I mean, it's the same thing. So, they made a promise and a commitment to the town and to the residents that they were gonna take care of these roads years ago. I mean, in 98, that's what, 23, 25 years ago we're talking about. Nothing's been done. So, why do we give consideration for this? I don't, I don't know. So, regarding the building itself too, I have a steel building that I just built two years ago in Plymouth. It's 26 feet high, about 10,000 square feet. And town of Plymouth required me to put screening on the street, screening between my building and the highway, just so it would not be an eyesore or a bad look to the neighborhood. And I'm in, in industrial area. This is a residential area. You know, what, what sort of screening are we talking about here? Don't see any. The, we're gonna be right on a parking lot. Mr. Tonsberg lawyer said that the ideal building would have been 120 feet long to house all his equipment that he needs, but he, he made it smaller for the, for the residents so it would be more, look better. So, so where's the rest of the equipment going that would, that would ideally fit in a 120-foot building? I know where it is right now. It's, it's behind Kim's backyard and, and, and everybody's line of sight when you drive down the street, there's, there's equipment all over the place, there's, there's dump trucks and leaf loaders and backhoes and, and that's what we're seeing now, right there. And it's not kept up. There's cars all over the front yard when the, when the, when the employees come to work in the morning, they park all over the front grass of the building, right now, the maintenance building. How's that gonna change when this is built? Where's, where's, the employees could probably park in the parking lot, I guess, but I don't trust that the, that the upkeep and the, the rest of that equipment is not going to be just in plain view. So, for all those reasons, I'm against it. And, and like this gentleman had said, you know, if, if, if the roads were maintained, this might be a totally different conversation. But, but we have, we don't have a good neighbor and, and this is why we're here. This is why all these people are here against us. There's, I'd be, I'd be interested to see who's here for this. I mean, we can take sound bites from Facebook posts and this guy's comment and this guy's comment and read them out loud. Well, I can give you double that for people who are against it. Clearly, the majority's here. So, that's, that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Kim Irvine, 24 Putters Place. So, I moved here seven years ago and there was barely any equipment over at the maintenance building. Little did I know that within that timeframe, I had, there's tree removals one time, a couple of years ago, I called because I'd never seen it before. It was this big eyesore and it was someone out of Canada. Didn't know anything about it. They allowed him to park, he said they allowed him to park his vehicles there. And I said, well, it's gotta get out. I called the town. There's a hot tub, there's broken down stuff, there's, what is gonna be different at the new place? I would be happy to say, oh geez, let's move it. It's not gonna be my problem anymore, but he's gonna do the same thing over there. So, you know, he's not gonna, I don't know how he's gonna fit with all the added equipment there are there. There's just no way that that's all gonna be inside. He's just gonna, he's gonna make all these promises and not follow through. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Horton. I live at 204 Country Club Way since 2008. Just to give those of you that don't know Country Club Way a point of reference, I'm one mile from the clubhouse. And in one mile tonight on my way here, I counted, counted 60, I stopped counting after 60 potholes that were at least a foot big, at least a foot big. I didn't count the little ones, just the big ones. So, so don't tell me that the roads are great, 'cause they're not great. I lived there, I've lived there since 2008. They stink. Now, I don't know who's responsible for that. The town? I pay taxes like everybody else in this room. So, it seems like this is the hot potato that nobody wants to deal with. So, I don't care if it's the town that's on the hook for this. I don't care if it's Fred Tonsberg that's on the hook for this. And I believe that Fred owns the country club, the golf course, and he's the principal for High Pines. So, tell me what the difference is there as far as Fred's responsibility is concerned? So, it's between Fred and the town. So, the town and Fred need to come together. I pay taxes. Every year, I pay taxes and these roads suck. Any, everybody, George is absolutely right. And so, we need to fix it. I wouldn't be here right now. Build your maintenance facility. Go right ahead, have at it, but not before the roads are fixed. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow board members. My name is John Dannehy. I'm an attorney and I represent Peter-
Last name again, sorry.
Dannehy, D-A-N-E-H-E-Y. I represent the butter across the- I represent the butter across the street, that's Peter, and Debbie Hooper. They're at 425 Country Club Way. I think my thrust is really to address the, the special permit, but I think what probably this board, at least one board member's trying to ascertain is the theory of alter ego with corporations. A corporation acts as one thing and yet they're the same people who are actually in the other. And I think one question that's really kind of interesting is, if they are maintaining the road in some capacity, who are the employees that are doing it? And I suspect it's probably the Indian Pond Country Club members who are going out fixing the roads, because I suspect there's no employees for High Pines Corporation, but I digress. Zoning is supposed to protect the interest of the abutters to any kind of proposed project, and that's to ensure that the applicant adheres to your bylaws. Those bylaws which are created, or shall we say promulgated through the community, they choose to adopt based on that growth and that development. When the golf course was originally built, the plan, if you can see it, unfortunately, it's unfortunate for the TV. But the plan that was approved in 1998 for the site plan. Thank you.
Make sure it works.
That's in pink, and of course, Country Club Way that comes up and then down here. The parking lot's over on the right-hand side to the clubhouse, the greens and the courses behind it. The clubhouse was supposed to be built right here, this is the yellow little building. Ultimately, where they're proposing is to swap it and put it on the other end. The problem with this was, they decided at the time that it was more financially beneficial to them to actually move this off the proposed and approved area for the parking lot, because they needed more parking space, which at the time made perfect sense, because there are no homes. It was approved, this was the project, the town of Kingston wanted a golf course. Made perfect sense. As a part of it, they had their phasing for their housing that they wanted to develop. So the golf course gets commenced, construction and building, and they decide, let's move it over to the lot, Lot 4-109. That's where it is currently. That's the structure, that's the building where it is. So, to their benefit, they did do it, and it made sense. But originally, that's where it was approved. And I think it's important for the board to understand, when it was approved, okay, that was through the special permit. But when they actually built the building, they didn't come back to the board and ask for a modification or a major modification. They just went and they got a building permit. And they got it from the town, town issued it, that was legal, nobody appealed it, you could have, but there was nobody around there to want to appeal it. So it gets built, that's where it's, where it's located, and it was owned by them. And so I think, you know, that's a very important starting point, because that's where everybody, when this whole subdivision and the subdivisions that were gonna be built subsequently, had this anticipation when they were buying their house, that's where the club, the maintenance building was. Obviously, when we pushed forward, there was some issues for financial reasons and they ended up selling to a third party. So be it, their choice, okay, to do it. And they then took back a lease, which they are currently in right now, that's the location of it. And they've been there for over 21 years. I think Mr. Tonsberg's correct, the location is really unsightly, it's kept in poor condition, doesn't look good, they've got equipment all over the place. The problem that we have, at least from our perspective, is that they have over 147 acres on this location. And they're decided, in their financial best interest, is to just swap it and put it over into an area that has now been subsequently well-developed. All the people who bought into the subdivision had an expectation when they bought it that this is where the maintenance building is, it was supposed to be there, but here, this is it. And now they're gonna swap it and put it literally on the edge of the neighborhood. The edge of the neighborhood. They've got over 147 acres that they could put it anywhere else. Now it's true, they're not gonna be put in the middle of the holes of the fairways, but they do have other locations. One of the locations certainly we know of is not represented here, but there is the driving range. Behind the driving range, there's a bunch of, of forest and areas, and there is a structure they decided to build. That structure they built, again, on their own, they decided to build a structure that was not permitted, which is located back here. What was actually very helpful to hear from the applicant is that they're suggesting that they want to take some of the equipment, the equipment that doesn't fit into their brand-new building they're proposing, and place it, I presume, somewhere in this facility, because there is a trail or a path that can go actually up in between the fairway, I'm sorry, the driving range, and I'm not sure which hole that is, 18 maybe, or actually 9, in this location, where the building is. Now, one would think that when you're doing a golf course, that you would want not to put a maintenance building, a storage building, basically what's a commercial steel building, in the location of where the actual clubhouse is, or the neighborhood, on the peripheries. You'd want to take it, hide it, and store it somewhere else. And so one of the issues that we have as an abutter is, is this the only location for it? They're the ones who's asking this board to put it up here and put it where they want it. But is there actually other locations that is more beneficial to the neighborhood? Because again, you're looking at it, is it more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? And if, if we were to submit a 6200 square feet steel building, right on the edge, okay, they moved it 50, they moved it 50 feet off the property line, I believe, at least from what I looked at the map, 49. something. So they moved it maybe another, I forget what the size setback is, 10 feet or something, another 40 feet. But still, it's right next to a house, it's right next to the neighborhood where people are coming in. And what's behind it? 20 feet of a retaining wall that they're proposing, I believe. My numbers may be wrong, maybe it's higher, but a huge retaining wall they're gonna be putting up there. Another issue, at least from tonight, they're saying, okay, we don't have enough space, we don't think, we're not too sure. Why are you building a 6200 square foot storage facility for golf carts? If you don't know whether or not they're actually gonna fit in it? If you've got 80, then jeepers, you should make sure you have at least 80 or up to 90 for overage. And if you're gonna have commercial lawnmowers, or, you know, the blowers, or either items that they're suggesting, they're actually going to put them on the first floor. Now, what's clever, and it's actually ingenious, it's a good thing, is that what they're proposing is like a fire station. Come in the back, get them ready so they can go out the front. But that means they're gonna be coming around the front of the clubhouse, in front of everything, in front of the parking lot, and making whatever they're doing to prepare these, these, these equipment to come in and go out. It's open to the public, there's no screening, there's no vegetation. And what's also a little disturbing is the fact that they're storing material there. I'm gonna submit some pictures to the board in just a second, but they've got huge mounds of material. Now, the material from the winter is not gonna be used for the roads, but it's used for, I'm sure, because it looks like it's bunker sand, sands for repairing and doing different items to their holes, which makes sense. But they're gonna put it right out in front, and so, and so everybody can see it. In fact, this bird's eye view actually shows some material in the front. So, that makes no sense to be putting it in front of all the neighbors to see. It should be disclosed and hidden. And at least they mentioned, they're willing to put it somewhere else, that's a good idea. And I think the issue really is not that people don't want them to succeed or have a maintenance or storage building. It's the location, plain and simple. Okay, that's the real issue. So, I think, you know, from our perspective, you know, the expectations of everybody. I mentioned another issue about the declaration, okay, I've read the declaration. One of the things I thought was kind of interesting is, they reserved to themselves under their vehicles and equipment that nobody is to keep any commercial equipment outside to be seen, nobody's to park trucks, nobody's to do anything that would make the place look unsightly, so on and so forth. Well, you know, granted, that's the covenant for the people to abide by, but they're not doing that presently with the current place. And that has nothing to do with whatever disagreements or conflict that exists between the applicant and/or family member or whoever. Has to do with, when you're running a business, how do you keep it and how do you run it? And clearly, I'd like to present to the board some photographs taken last year and most recently. The first one's showing the material, it's also showing a 18-wheeler dumping material directly in, in the parking lot. The other picture is, that I'm gonna submit to the board so you can see it and part of the record. Again, showing the material during the summer, and it also shows the parking of cars all over in front of the current storage maintenance facility. One thing I think is interesting too, when you see these pictures, the doors for the equipment are actually in the back. So they come in off the golf course, they go in the back. Here, they're putting them on the sides, they have to come out and around, it's gonna be visible. One would think that if you're gonna have doors to go out, you'd put them in the back so they can go in to hide from the public. Again, it's a design, and I, I understand what they're trying to do, but it's just one of those issues that, you know, could be improved. With respect to the parking, if I may present this to your clerk. Thank you. The parking issue I have is, and maybe I missed it in the map when I was reviewing the site plan, I didn't see where the employee parking's going to be. And I think that's also important for the board to understand, because clearly, they don't have parking at the current place. If they're gonna have it here, then where is it? And I'm not sure if they're actually taking some of the current parking for the facility. And if that's the case, you really need to get a sense of what is the total amount they need to have based on what they're doing and what they're proposing. Lighting's another issue. You know, what's the lighting gonna be looking like? If they're gonna be putting a building of this size there, where are the lights? They have no, nothing to tell this board, how is it gonna impact? Because they clearly don't have any screening or any kind of vegetation, which the board should really recommend if that's where it's gonna go. The other thing I think is important is fire suppression. They've got gas machines on the first floor. I know it's electric. I'm not sure, I think it's imperative that the board obviously get the fire chief and the police, fire department in to figure out any kind of suppression issues. And outdoor storage, one of the things that was represented is that they have a generator on the first floor. And I think the applicant is suggesting, it's right here, on the first floor they're planning. They have grader, they have a sprayer, sprayer, truck, truck, and a dump truck and a leaf vac. I mean, they say, we're gonna move it off-site. But, based on their, their past practices, they haven't done that. And that's an issue with respect to that. You know, and maintenance is an issue, it's an ongoing issue, because from these pictures, I'll just show briefly, we're showing the buildings that are actually on the golf course that are not maintained. Windows are blocked off, fascia boards rotting, not painted. And, shall we say, some leaves and some debris growing out of the, of the gutters. So let me just show you these, and this was just taken last year. Let's show the gutters. Here's an example of one of their buildings on the golf course with the gutters having grass growing out of it. Here's another one of the porch lights not being maintained or painted. Here's another one showing windows blocked off, presumably because of golf balls hitting them, which makes sense, they're gonna be targets, but that's how they are maintaining it, for their own current members, that is. Here's another one. Again, you get to see, all the windows are blocked off. And then two more, here's another one with windows. Again, stuff growing out the gutters, the painting, the whole nine yards. Now, from a distance, you might not really see a lot of that, if you're way off, but this is not gonna be in a distance. This is gonna be across the street from two homes and next door to another one. And if that's how they took, take care, the final one. Again, I think this is actually the one next to the driving range. Again, boarded up windows and obviously broken windows in the lot. That's on their own property. We also know what they do with the maintenance and storage building, right next door that I just submitted, that Mr. Egan talked about and this gentleman talked about. And they're gonna say, we're gonna take really good care of this new steel building that we're gonna put up in front of all these people, shoehorning it in next to the street. You know, maybe they have the greatest intentions, but their past efforts haven't demonstrated that to the board or the people or the neighbors. So, I think I just conclude by saying, I really think you should seriously consider, you need a peer review. You know, get, get them to hire an expert to go through all these things. If you're gonna vet this, I think the first thing is, is this the right place for it? Ideally, it really should be hidden, that's the ideal place. But if you're gonna go forward with this, I would strongly recommend getting a peer review to go through this. There are so many things that they really need to come up forth and demonstrate to the board that they will do it, have done it, and/or you mandate it and condition it. And that's the power of the special permit. Because, you know, they just come in here and basically say, here it is, and this is what we want, we've got the power with the declaration, no you don't, you don't. That's called a special permit, they're asking you folks to amend it. It's their effort, they're, they're the ones who've created the situation. They've created this self-imposed problem of moving, having sold the facility, moving it now somewhere else, that really nobody wants it there. So, in any event, I'll pass it on, but I just want to say thank you, and we really would appreciate you. I'd say deny it is now worth not, at least get a peer review, get somebody to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for against, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board, the public. My name is Robert Galvin, I represent EBF LLC. We are the owner of the existing maintenance building. EBC LLC, the principal is Fred W. Tonsberg, Mr. Tonsberg's son. We've, just a few other background facts and a little different perspective on some of the things you've heard. Mr. Tonsberg Jr. has owned this building property, which is situated on about an acre lot since December 2nd, 2010. The building was originally constructed in approximately 2001. It was built to resemble a single-family home, but equipped with features needed to store all of the equipment and carts that Mr. Tonsberg Sr. said that they needed to store inside. The original plans called, as Mr. Dannehy just indicated, for the maintenance building to be located in a portion of the existing parking lot to the right of the main clubhouse. It's pretty apparent to him, apparently, that they needed more parking. So the maintenance building without any type of permits or approvals from the town other than a building permit was slid on to the next-door lot 4-109 and constructed there with a permit. There probably should have been a building, a special permit modification at that time, but obviously, too much time has passed to require that. As an aside, on the left side of the clubhouse, there was a similar issue. There wasn't enough parking constructed, and they constructed additional parking, all without getting other permits and approvals, they just did it because they needed it. If you've been up to Indian Pond Country Club at any time when they're having any type of a major function or event there, you'll know that even with all this extended parking, they don't have enough cars parked along the street, up and down Country Club Way. Mr. Dannehy showed you the pictures of where the cars parked now. For the staff members, they park all over the place, on the lawn, any, any place they choose. My client acquired the building, which was functioning as the cart barn. There was office space for Indian Pond Country Club on one of the upper floors as part of a purchase leaseback deal. At the time, the country club was in some type of financial distress. The lease terms were below market rate, the end of the term was 15 years. The thinking at the time was that Mr. Tonsberg Sr. would buy the property back, and the lease would be extended, and probably by somebody else who owned the golf course at that particular point. I have a colleague with me, Chris Worthy, who are gonna talk to you a little bit about some past defaults that were with the lease. It's true, there was a past default with the lease when Mr. Tonsberg elected not to pay the lease, but there isn't any such pending matters now. My client has never been asked for a lease extension. My client has never been, had the courtesy of an offer to purchase the building. They've worn it into the ground in violation of their lease, and now asked you to bail them out and give them another location. One of my client's concerns is the status of his building. If Indian Pond Country Club elects at some point not to use the current building for its future intended purpose. It's possible that the town might allow the continued use as a contractor's storage yard, or maybe it reverts to a residential use. But the question really needs to be asked by your board and answered by this applicant as to what is expected would happen with this existing building. as to what is expected would happen with this existing building before anything else gets approved. If the use has to be residential, as many know, and I was the attorney that represented the Tenzars in the case that was cited by counsel, there was significant damage to that house, there's significant damage to this facility from the golf course. As long as it remains a golf course facility and maintenance barn, there's not a lot of public outcry or personal outcry regarding golf ball strikes, but if this is going to become a residential use and return to a residential use, it's a major issue for this property, which is situated just to the right of the first hole. My client has contacted a company to determine what type of screening would be necessary. He's going to bring up a photograph that kind of shows what he envisions would be This is a rendering, and we can leave it with you, which shows the type of fencing and netting that would be needed in order to prevent that building from suffering golf ball strikes if it were to be reverted to a residential use. The home should be protected from screening to prevent someone from being injured or killed. And that was the gravement of the Tenzar case. If anybody took a site visit out there, you'd see the existing damage to the building, you'd see the existing damage to the property, all of that should be repaired and restored from the years of neglect and abuse by Indian Pond Country Club. It's not a state secret that the premises have been flooded on repeated occasions, the entire basement fills up with water, all the golf carts have been damaged, the fleet's been replaced on more than one occasion. It's because there was never any drainage consideration given to what happens when you extend a parking lot that you don't get any permits and approvals for. And I haven't heard yet any information in this presentation about what they intend to do with the drainage from the impervious surfaces, how they're going to prevent that from causing erosion either on the site or off-site or into the roadway, which many people have already spoken about. Attorney Danahy talked about peer review. As a municipal counsel for 32 years, whenever anybody asks for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, there's typically also a site plan review requirement, and there's always drainage calculations to show that the proposed project is meeting the state stormwater management regulations. And that's part of this board's responsibility, I would suggest, that you receive information on from the applicant to prove that the stormwater is properly managed and infiltrated on-site. I haven't heard a single bit of evidence about what's going to happen with the stormwater that's generated from the new impervious surfaces. Mr. Fred W. Tonsberg is going to hand you some of the pictures of the flooding.
... one copy of each, so, that's the amount of water that goes into the building, that's how they've been emptying it. You can look inside the building, you can see the golf cart being flooded out, you can see the height of the water that's in there.
So, so the flooding, we contend, was caused by another lack of maintenance and proper design in the existing parking lots that were built without permits and approvals, and the inattention paid by Indian Pond Country Club for those types of issues. And ultimately, my client will end up holding the bag for this, because it doesn't appear that anybody's going to take care of this property or deal with it. We also believe it's quite certain that refueling has taken place on this property, because not only do they have electric golf carts that are charged here, but much of the equipment is fueled here. There is no central fuel storage facility on this golf course, fuel is hand-brought in or trucked in, and equipment is fueled here. I don't know what the plan is for this proposed building, we haven't got any details as to what's going to happen with regard to fueling. So, and anybody, as you can see, is able to discern that old equipment, the staff parks all over the lawn, and just the condition of this place is deplorable, and it's hard to think that this is anything but purposeful. Yep, just let me finish, okay? So I think it's a legitimate point of inquiry is to ask how the new structure is going to be better maintained. It's a legitimate point of inquiry to ask why the board would authorize an expanded use of the portion of the left parking lot without an analysis of the impact on parking to the main clubhouse facility, which already doesn't have enough parking for its main events. As it stands now, you can clearly see that there isn't enough parking when this country club has any type of a major event. I won't harp on the streets and ways issue, because everybody else has adequately addressed it, but the granting of a special permit is discretionary, and allowing a new building is nothing but rewarding somebody for past misconduct. ZBA should be concerned about the appearance of the building, not only of our building, but of this new building, and is obligated to make sure that it blends in with this neighborhood. This new building does not look anything like anything else in that residential portion of the neighborhood. Not only do I think the site should be peer-reviewed for stormwater compliance, but I think you should have a general civil engineer look at the property. I think it would be entirely appropriate to see a landscape plan prepared by a registered landscape architect. There should be some type of detail as to where loading and unloading of materials and equipment is going to take place. I've heard nothing about a loading space. And I concur with Attorney Danahy that there are certainly other sites in this golf course where this could be located if it has to be moved at all. Assuming that peer review says it could work there, I also agree that there'd have to be strict conditions on hours of operation, lighting, screening, storage of materials, and several other issues. Attorney Fleming talked about the considerations for the approval of a special permit. The use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Well, that's what they contended when they came to the board the first time. And I think it's clearly evident that the use as developed and operated already adversely affects the neighborhood. The developed facilities will adequately provide for all proposed inappropriate operations of the use. Well, that's what they told the board as many years ago when they were asking for the original special permit. And now they're telling you again that what they're even proposing will not be adequate for all proposed inappropriate operations of this use. The site is an appropriate location for the use structure condition? Certainly disagree with that. This is absolutely in an appropriate location to put it at the entrance of a major residential portion of this development, particularly when they have so much other land. If you visit any of the other golf courses in this area, you probably would never even see the maintenance facilities, whether that's a public golf course or a private golf course. Yet this one is proposing it prominently in the front on a portion of its parking lot that it needs in order for its staff and people that are guests there to visit. I don't think that there's much question that the access to the site is over the streets and ways, which are not appropriate for any more use until they're repaired and completed. Attorney Fleming skipped over the fact that the site design has to be compatible with the existing natural features of the site and the surrounding area. Well, that's being altered all the time. The natural features of the site, even in the course of the last year, in the course of the last few months, have been altered significantly. So you're not looking at what exists there in a natural state anymore, it's been altered. They should show you what it used to look like before they altered it so radically. And clearly, the site design, as evident from the complaints you've heard about the neighbors, is not compatible and creates adverse impacts, particularly from noise. So for all those reasons, we're asking the board to consider having a further peer review done, maybe even make an effort to see if they can stay in the current location. If it doesn't work, we'll be the first to tell you. But this is way premature, and I'm not even sure they have all the permits and approvals they'll require, because they should have site plan approval as well. Thank you.
Public, anymore? I'm only going to allow 10 more minutes, because I've got to move on to the next hearing, because this place closes at 10:00.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board. My name is Debbie Hooper, and I live at 425 Country Club Way. Testing?
Yep, so, there we go.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, zoning board. My name is Debbie Hooper, and I live at 425 Country Club Way. I'm a director butter of the proposed location of the applicant's proposed maintenance building, and I have a lot to say, and I'll try to make it quick. I'm trying. My family and I have lived in Indian Pond Estate since 2008, three houses away from where I live now. And we purchased the lot for our current house and moved there, this was our forever home. And at no time was I told that there would be a maintenance building going across the street from where I live, otherwise I would not have bought it. Yes, I bought a lot next to a commercial building, but this commercial building does not have everything that the new, I can't. I guess I'll start with, would any of you want a 6,200 square foot metal maintenance building directly across from your house? I'm pretty certain that each one of you would answer no. The applicant has various other options to build the maintenance building, such as within the golf course, away from residential view, construct a new one in the original location at the end of the other nice parking lot, or buy or lease back its current location. I would assume that many of you have been to function events over the years, or played at other golf courses, or driven by them, and at no time would a maintenance building be in plain view. This is just not going how I wanted to. I do have a question, though, regarding the applicant's application on why it is in the name of Frederick Tonsberg, when discussion tonight, when clearly Indian Pond Country Club owns the land, but Fred Tonsberg is the applicant, yet High Pines Corporation owns the road, and Indian Pond Country Club is also owned by Fred Tonsberg, and everything connects, but the big thing is, is why is the application in his name alone and not in that of the corporation? Biggest concern, and I just can't read any of this, my biggest concern is that it's not aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. It's 6,200 square feet, the surrounding houses are 3,800 square feet, 3,700 square feet, 3,300 square feet. This is huge, it's a metal building with just a farmer's porch roof on it and a couple pillars to make it look like it's going to blend in. This is supposed to give country club estates, Indian Pond Estates, was supposed to give a country club vibe, bigger houses, nicer houses, a nicer area to live in. Any place that you drive in a subdivision that is relatively similar, you're not going to see a maintenance building, they're always hidden. This maintenance building doesn't have anything that's going to prohibit anybody, including myself, seeing the maintenance building, equipment, anything, there's no plans. They can say, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we think we're going to do this, we're proposing to do this, but nothing is guaranteed in lighting, water runoff, just, just everything. I'm just trying to make it quick. So I'm requesting this board to deny the applicant's request for a special permit. It would be extremely detrimental to the neighborhood, as the allowance of the maintenance is injurious to the neighborhood rather than advantageous. It would excessively impact and affect the future sale of my house, as well as immediate surrounding houses. I had a nice big plan to do my front yard and landscape it, because I built it a couple years ago, landscaping is always the same thing. I've now had to reduce that, because I've had to get an attorney to protect my interests. So, again, this maintenance building could go anywhere else, I'm just asking the board not to put it again across the street from my house. And there's just so many reasons why. And in closing, I shouldn't have to endure the added stress and burden of not being able to peacefully enjoy my home, and incurring financial burden of legal fees to ensure that my rights are protected because a neighbor made a bad mistake or made a decision, business decision, 10 years ago in selling its current maintenance building. I'm requesting that while this matter is pending, that the applicant not do any work in that area, because it would not technically be in the ordinary course for business for a golf course, nor is it landscaping. As a director butter, I respectfully request that you deny the applicant's application and any further applications for a new second maintenance building in the location of the parking lot directly across from my house, for all the reasons that I just tried to state, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hillary Cerniak, I live at 414 Country Club Way. So, I live next door to the proposed, would be living next door to the proposed maintenance building. I don't think I have to have anything to say that'd be any more enlightening than anyone's said earlier. I just want to echo what the people have said before me, in that I don't have a lot of faith that the upkeep of this building will be kept if it's built. You can see, we talked plenty about the roads, but what about the parking lot itself, that looks just as terrible as the roads that's right there? That I believe would be owned by the club, right, the parking lot? And that looks pretty terrible. The building that's up on the driving range that we saw pictures of before, I can see that out, my kitchen window, looks pretty terrible. Do I now need to, in a few years, look at another terrible building out the side of my house? That's something I'm very concerned about. And then the other thing that I have concerns about are the fact that there's going to be chemicals stored in this building, and whatever else, and, I don't know, I'm concerned about the danger of this being, there being stuff in this building that's right next to my house. So, that's all. I know everyone's trying to get out of here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public?
Good evening, my name's Chris Worthy, I also represent EBFLLC. I just have one point to make on more of a legal matter relating to this petition, in that I still have a question of whether the applicant has standing to do this project at all. When the property was sold to my client back in 2010, and as the, an argument that the applicant makes in his petition, is that any rights, development rights, special permit rights, zoning rights, run with the land, go along with the building that's been sold. And so, I would argue that the rights to construct, maintain, own a maintenance building associated with this golf club was assigned to my client when the property was sold to him. My client would never have bought a property if he thought there was any chance the next day, the applicant could go around him and build a completely new building and cut him out of the process. Yeah, they had a lease, which was helpful, but if he had stopped paying, broken the lease, and we had to a victim on day two, and he built a new maintenance building somewhere else, that would be a serious detriment to my client's, the value of the property. So I really don't think that there is any standing here to do this. He's given up the rights to this accessory as to the golf club when he sold the property back in 2010.
Is there still a lease on that property currently?
There is currently, yep, it expires next year.
Until 2025?
2025, yes. And so regardless of whether it is, when, if the lease is renewed, I mean, we've been clear that we're willing to engage and talk to continue this use to improve the building in some way, but that obviously hasn't happened so far. But I don't think there is any ability to build another maintenance building, because those rights were transferred away back in 2010. Just a quick point that we wanted to follow up on, that in addition, if, in the event this is ever granted, in addition to the netting that would be required, there also must be some sort of screening between, like, land state screening between the two properties. We have examples of that as well. But...
So, the current building, it stands right now, you can see what they did. It looks like they did try to mitigate the water getting into the, we should say, into the basement. So it looks like they put a little cake right there.
Let's follow up on that later. We can, we can talk. I think that point has been made, that there needs to be a lot addressed, but I would still argue that the basic ability to build this, another maintenance building is not a development right that the applicant has any longer.
So what we're saying is, because now what they're doing, I mean, again, you're changing, we're not requesting the change in this use, all right? They're coming for this board, and the zoning board has already done their job. And now they're trying to ask you to correct his mistakes. So when cars leave here at night from functions and he has a 400 person wedding, all the lights are coming now down into this area. So you can see he's, the town has asked him to do screening in the past and if you drive around at the pool or anything else, you'll never see any screening. It never gets done. So we're hoping that you deny this. I mean, it should be denied based on all the merits of your purr tonight. But we do want, if he does, not only going to be asking to protect the property with some golf netting, which is more than reasonable, there is no reason not to do something like that. So we would ask that you condition the permit, if you give it to him, at that location to protect the property, but then also screen it with an abreviate. So now that's, this is the same photo that, that is that. You can see a huge difference. You can barely see the house just from the screening. So we would, this is the property line right here.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anybody else on Zoom? Is there any hands up? No hands up? Attorney Fleming or Mr. Tonsberg? Yeah, you got about three minutes.
I mean.
The microphone.
To say that they have approached us about renewing the lease or doing something is just plain false. They've sent an eviction notice to us. They want to evict us. They sent it two years ago. It's another lawyer, attorney, attorney reef. Mr. Tonsberg has at least four lawyers who are, who are representing him in various aspects of cases against his father. But there's been no discussion. They've said they wanted us out. Formal eviction notice was served on us. We're going, supposed to go in and fix the building up after they've told us they're going to evict us? Second, no drainage? We gave you a plan the first time around. We designed an entire drainage system for the site. It's self-contained. You've got the plans. You can see the catch basins that are going to be installed. None of the drainage is going to go anywhere but on, but underneath the parking lot in the, in the drainage system that we've designed. And I appreciate Mr. Galvin acknowledging that that he represented the Tenzars in the case I've been referring to, but I guess I don't, I thought, I thought he lost frankly. And I thought that the Supreme Court said that golf balls going on adjoining properties is part of the reality of life. And the fact that there may be some golf balls going on to Mr. Fred W. Tonsberg's property is not per se illegal. It's axiomatic. These are the words of the SJC. Axiomatic, that golf balls will be struck poorly and go on the property of adjoining property owners. So.
One minute, make it count. So I'm going to have to continue guys.
I'd like to answer to some of those questions and I actually have to thank Mr. Galvin for talking about screening.
I can't read your walls, so you gotta be quick because I got all this stuff.
The, we have done some screening on the first tee. The, Mr. Galvin insisted with his client at one time, two or three, four, five years ago, that we put abreviates up on the golf course way in the back, which we did. We did everything that he asked to do at the time. When we went to court and get the SJC, we wound up having to take them out. So where we put them? On the first tee, right in front of where these pictures are shown. Right now, you can go down there and look at them. When we put them in, they were six feet tall. Right now, I just asked my superintendent a couple of days ago, probably hit the tops of them because they're about 12 feet tall now. So the screening is already there, but just exactly what Mr. Fleming talked about was what the SJC about golf balls going onto somebody else's property. As far as the drainage is concerned, it's a one big factor. Thank you very much for bringing those pictures up. I hope they come, become part of this situation now. Because the problem that we're having in that building, as I mentioned before, the carts are being stored underneath. It's floods and a rainstorm. We have to be concerned tonight that we have two or three inches of rain because we'll have to move the carts out first thing in the morning. The problem with the, where the water is coming from is not my parking lot. It's coming from the backside of the, of the building. There's the amount, the amount of water that's coming off that building where it's coming into the parking lot, and we have an answer for that. The answer is to put a berm up. We found that out by, and he showed us another picture. He showed us about we put a small berm up to see if the water was coming from us or where it was coming from. We determined that the water is coming from the maintenance building's lot 80%. The balance of it, if, if, once we move that building and once we don't, not involved with that, we plan on building a permanent berm, a good looking berm.
I gotta move on to another 40B. So you guys really quickly are open to peer review on your drainage?
Pardon?
Peer review on your drainage?
Absolutely no problem.
Yes, we'll require money and then you get to pick your peer review. We'll have to do that next meeting because I don't have the list in front of me, but you'll have to get you a list from the building department or the planning board.
The conditions we need to look at.
Yeah, just, 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 I'm not going to be around for a little while, but.
Even then, when we're going to continue.
I'll give you my, my person in the offices and you can email or send them to John. Send them to John. We'll get them. Right. Yeah, and whatever fire department, water department, sewer department, health department, absolutely no problem getting letters from me.
Very good. We'll have to continue this. We're not doing the first week of April, that's for sure. What are they?
160 Summer Street, 56 Main Street.
I have one question. Did you ever consider a different site?
Pardon?
Did you ever consider a different site?
I hope, like, like I said, I hope that those plans become part of this because one of those plans that he, I, perfect. I want to show you where the site is.
All right, thank you. Hey, enough. Moving on.
So the answer would be yes, you did.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Just have them at the next meeting.
We have two hearings on March 20.
April 3rd, we have four hearings.
You can try for March, but I know April 4th is a no-no and then.
And then we don't have a quorum for school vacation.
And then May. You want to be the first one in May or you want to be third fill on second, uh, third week of March?
It would be May 1st or May 15th.
What's, what date is the third week of March?
We only meet on Wednesdays, first and third Wednesday.
Okay, or what, or the first week in when?
May.
First week in May.
What is that date?
May 1st.
May 1st?
Just one more thing, you know, because I know it's going to get lost in the weeds. And I explained this to Debbie six months ago. This winter, and you can probably attest to this, she had a tremendous amount of sand on that parking lot this winter. The reason for the sand, I have 57 bunkers. Every one of them has been redone. So you only do bunkers maybe once every 20 years. So it's, that sand, and I told her this, it's going to be here this winter, but you won't see it there again.
Very good. Make a motion to continue 60 Clinty Club Way to May 1st, 7 o'clock.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up on the agenda. Thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda, public hearing for Preolo Whopping Realty LLC. You want to read it standing?
Oh, yes.
Keep it quiet. We still got a meeting going on. Take it outside. All talking outside. Continue, carry on.
Okay, public, notice of public hearing. A public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200 via Zoom on Wednesday, December 6, 2023 at 7:00 PM due to the petition of Preolo Whopping Really, Ella, Realty LLC, 233 Pembroke Street, Kingston, Mass. 02364 to request a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B to allow construction at 113 and 117 Whopping Road, the site in Kingston, the municipality, of an age-restricted residential development consisting of 60 units, the project, on approximately 643,260 63 square feet of land. Map 52, Lot 9, map 42, Lot 8, Mass Housing ID number 1165. Traffic impact assessment by Riverhawk Environmental LLC, Marshfield, Mass. dated June 20, dated June 2023. Site plan prepared by Riverhawk Environmental Civil Engineering and Environmental Consulting, Middleborough, Mass. Plans designed by Plans Design Quebec, Canada, dated July 7, 2023. Continued to January 7, 2024 and continued to March 6, 2024.
Motion open?
Uh, yeah, motion to open. I second it.
Open the hearing. All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. She did. No, she did. She did. All right, um, first order of business while you guys are setting up, we are going to need some sort of signature to continue the timeframe?
Yes, we'll need another waiver. Please.
All your paperwork. Take it away.
Okay, for the record, my name's Barb Rego. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, with the civil engineers for the project. So this project has been presented to you once previously. During the, that presentation, the, the project as proposed was for 60 age-restricted units. We've modified it based on the, the lack of availability of water. We've modified the design to be now 32 units, so 32, well, 16 duplexes for a total of 32 units. There'll be a mix of two berm units, there'll be six two berm units and 26 three berm units. That, that, it'll now, each of the duplexes will be on a individual lot. So we'll be going through a definitive subdivision process with this also. And the reason we're doing that is now we can have individual wells on each lot to serve each duplex. It'll be private water supply wells as opposed to a public water supply well. So the road got modified slightly to, to allow for the 16 units to be duplex units to be placed around and to allow lot lines to be in, in between each of the units. Basically, what we've done is we've kind of done a more schematic plan. This, the plans aren't as detailed as our first submission. They're less detailed. We're kind of here tonight to make sure we're heading in the right direction and before we do the final push and do the heavy detailed plans for submission. Basically, it's, it's, now it results in a, in about a 950-foot long roadway. It's going to be 24 feet wide. We're posing a sidewalk on one side, a five-foot sidewalk directly on the back of the, on the other side of the Cape Cod berm, so no grass strip as the chairman suggested. So that'll go up one, the right side of the road to the, to the rear of the property. There'll still be a single curb cut off of Whopping Road. There'll be one entry into the site. It's as far down from Ring Road as we can get and still allow for, for homes to be on both sides of the, of the roadway and to stay out of the sensitive resource areas, the 200-foot riverfront area on the, on the southern, oh, sorry, western portion of the site that we're trying to stay away from. And we looked at, you know, in redesigning this, we tried to look at the comments that were offered during the first hearing. Made sure that we had, the fire truck was going to be able to go down, turn around on the site and exit the site, that I did a swept path analysis and that will clearly work the way this road's designed. Will actually be a reduction in traffic. We will get, if, if we're, you know, find out we are headed in the right direction, we'll get our traffic consultant to modify the trip generation results based on this modified design. The utilities will be, and send, one big thing is, that affects the septic is now the units will be, they will not be age-restricted, so they will be available to all ages.
Where is the septic system? At the top of the hill?
Uh, yeah, the septic system is now going to be at the top of the hill over.
You're pumping it uphill?
Yep, it'll be, it'll all be a low-pressure sewer system and in this area over here will be the, the area for the proposed septic. They'll all have a exist, a septic tank on each lot that will serve both duplex units and then it'll go into a pump chamber and it'll get pumped up through a low-pressure sewer system to the, to the soil absorption system which will exist on the northern portion of the site.
Is that pump, where is that pump station at the very bottom by the street?
It's not one pump station. It'll be a pump station on each lot. So each lot will have a septic tank and the effluent from that septic tank will get pumped up via a small pump through an inch and a quarter line to the, to the station up top.
What do they do for loss of power?
Well, with loss of power, you lose loss of water because it'll be on wells. So there's not heavy water use in water. There'll be a day's storage in each pump chamber. So it'll be typically like, we designed lots of septic systems with pumps and, and usually there's no problem. When the power goes out, you're not taking showers, you're not doing laundry.
But what if someone has a generator and they are taking showers? What happens?
Then their pump would be on a generator. Then their pump would be on a generator. If they have a whole house generator, the pump would be supplied.
Sort of covenant, because we had this exact problem happen where the power went out.
Sure, sure.
If it wasn't pumping uphill, it was coming.
Sure.
Through the round downhill.
We just did, I'm doing a project in Taunt with 110 units and it has same thing and there's, they are hookups for emergency generators, so if.
There's was not singles. There's was one big one, but it failed.
Yeah, if you have one big one, it's a different story. Usually you do need a, you do need an emergency generator to power. But these will be individual.
Like you said, it came up in town already once, this is very recently.
Sure, sure. But like I said, there is, tends to be a much lower water use during periods of power outage and, and if someone does have a generator.
Power underground? Electricity underground?
Yeah, it will be underground utilities, correct. Yes. Yep. Okay, so, so yeah, so discuss the septic, the water, each, each lot will have a well, a private water supply well. That well will serve the two units on the, on the subject lot. The.
How many, how many affordable units?
There'll be eight affordable units. So there'll be a mixture of two berm and three berm units. There'll be six two berm units.
Where'd you pick them?
In 26. It's kind of tough to see from where you're sitting and it wasn't.
Just keep me numbers.
Presented in the plan, but they have, and I could, I could bring this over closer to you after, but basically there's an affordable, it's with.
I have the number of units here. If you give me the number.
Yeah, number, would you like me to call off the numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so number, and this is a quick, I did this today and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be subject to minor changes, but basically, number, I'll go this way. Number four is affordable. Number eight is affordable. Number 11 is affordable. Number 15 is affordable. Number 22 is affordable. Number 26 is affordable. Number 29 is affordable. And number 32 is affordable. Does that add it to eight hopefully? And I, does that add it to eight, hopefully?
Eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, eight.
Okay, yeah. So those, and again, those are just kind of tried, uh, the, the, the development would be built from the, you know, from Wapping Road up into the site, so it would kind of be phased where the, the homes down lower would be, all the, all the infrastructure for the roadways would be constructed, but the homes would be built initially down lower first. And, um, so we tried to put up every four houses, we tried to add in, every four units, excuse me, we tried to add in an affordable, and we did try to mix the twos and the threes. We'd only have one affordable, uh, two-bedroom unit and five market-rate units, and then there'd be, um, seven, um, uh, three-bedroom affordable units. So one two-bedroom affordable and seven three-bedroom affordables. And, um, we did, you know, we heard your comments before about a small, we are proposing, and this again, these, these plans are meant to be conceptual in nature, and we haven't got to the heavy details of the landscape or anything, but we are proposing a, uh, small shelter, eight by 12, at the front of the site for a bus stop and potentially for, um, um, maybe have the mailboxes in that area and a landscaped, you know, decorative landscape entry with, with the, with both at that location.
The one off of South Street, we kind of had, did this idea.
There's, there's one existing one that's good?
Yeah, off of South Street, right, right, we literally at the Dead Man's Corner there, where they have that 40B right there, with, we had something small where they can get out, get their mail, and kids, if need be, can, there's a bus stop.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at that and... And, um, you know, again, you know, we've, we've made provisions on these plans and the plans that we submitted for the areas where we deal with the stormwater. Again, we're going to try to, again, um, in each of the homes, we'll, we'll try to have infiltration at each of the, um, home sites, so we're trying to infiltrate the water where it's being generated. We'll have, we're proposing two areas for larger stormwater basins to collect the runoff from the road and, and manage that. And try to keep everything as far away from the wetland resource areas and provide as much open space as, as possible to.
What, um, do these houses have garages in the center?
They do. They, they, they all have, um, a single stall garage, each unit will have a single stall garage.
And, so I guess the only questions I would have...
Oh, they might even be two-car garages.
So each unit has two car?
Yeah.
So it's, so it's like four, four... But the, I guess my question is that one per unit or two per unit?
Two per unit, two per unit.
So Unit 13 gets two and Unit 14 gets two?
Yes.
So it's four, okay, that's what, that's what...
Yep.
Get confused. The only reason I'm asking is because like Unit 15 and 16, if you have four bedrooms there, you need to have four parking spots on, on, on its property. Nothing can be on the road. So if you have, I guess in theory, if it all fits, if you can get four cars in the garage...
You need four spots for every bedroom.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, yeah.
And then they have maybe potential for what, two cars or one car each in front?
Correct, yep.
All right, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
Um, hard for me to think of stuff. Um, the only thing I'd ask, I guess if you, I'm an engineer because you're going to get peer reviewed, but, um, just slight overflow parking, I mean, everything's there, just in case there was some, one person had a party where the street's already been granted or you're wanting to basically ask for a variance to shorten, make the road smaller, so nothing can park on the road.
Yeah, it's 24 feet wide, but, which is a, which is a relatively wide road, but usually sufficient for parking.
But I guess my point is, is I, I don't know if you want to create an overflow parking area.
Yeah, we, we can certainly do that.
You know, something where...
Add like four, six spaces along the...
Yeah, exactly, where it's, where it's, I don't know where to put it, you guys can decide.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find the best place for it.
Just in case, like I said, one property has a pa- a party, or, or God forbid, two neighbors who live in the sexy building hate each other, and they don't want either of them parking in any of the side, you know? You know, where does it, someone if they're having their grandparents park?
Absolutely.
I'm sure, because I'm sure you're going to have some sort of, uh, uh, not covenant, but, uh, association, you know, association law. Homeowners Association, man, get tired.
Well, there's going to be common space there, right? There, there will be common, like, for that, for the basin, and that's going to...
Right, so, but you've got the two parking lots inside, you're doing some stuff, you got a garage, and you've got some other values.
Something you can add in as you feel, it's something, yeah, add in as you feel. I'm just, I, I know you're going to need it, we, we asked for it, if you go up Indian Pond on the right, that 40B, we asked for it there, and it is utilized.
Yeah.
There's two, I think there's two parking areas.
What Glenn, Glenn was just saying is, um, each of these lots are going to be individually owned, it's a condex, so each person will own, you know, half of the, half of the lot or...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it won't be like a typical condominium association, but yeah, so, but there will be some common, open space.
So once you guys basically transfer it over to them for the homeowners' association, they get to battle it out.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, that's, like I said, it's your problem until it's done, then it's their problem, and then whether it's a problem or not, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, like I said, something, if it's four spots here, two spots there, especially when you have these bigger units where it looks like you have a lot of parking, but at the same time, there's going to be more people parking there, everyone in the mother's going to have a car, so, putting it out there now.
Okay.
Um, I'm currently, brain going, I'll go this way, Bob?
Um, I think it looks like a good plan, I think it's a good location for it, uh, in general. Uh, it's going to help that area, um, of the, being an old junkie hut and everything, but, um, and I think that any provisions between parking and, and, um, the fire department, you know, like I say, each, each division of, uh, of the town, building department, fire department, conservation, I think those can be worked out. Um, 106, I still think 106 is a old horse road, and I'm just a little nervous about the traffic coming and going out of 106. It's kind of a bad road to begin with. Um, I don't know what we can do about that. Um, lights, I, I, I don't know. I, I, my only concern is traffic. Other than that, I think it's a, it's okay.
Kevin?
As far as traffic goes out there, that's kind of like on the straightaway, them pulling out, so they get a good view both ends before it goes around the corner, but, um, you know, some lighting out there might help.
Pole light, I mean, I think, I think every street on 106 has a pole light.
Yeah, we're, we're open any of that stuff, and like I say, the street lighting, we usually do it just in each, each unit gets a pole light.
No, I think they're more worried at, at the, where, where 106 meets with...
And I don't know if that's the answer, but I, I just think maybe a traffic peer review, I just, something to...
They have to do peer review anyways.
Yep, we did have a, a professional engineer, who's a traffic engineer, evaluate the intersection, and he, he felt or stated in his report that it was, that there was sufficient site distance in both directions, and that he was happy with the intersection design, but...
Kevin, continue.
That was it, the only other thing I was, I read, uh, comments in here.
I can return back to you.
But, uh, you know, a peer review of the board needs some help.
There's conservation comments also.
Typical, typical conditions that we do on, on stuff like that, so, you know.
Yeah, they're going to get peer reviewed no matter what. What's that?
Maybe, yeah, I'm just concerned it's very close to the wetlands.
Where, where is it close to the wetlands?
Uh, well, on your map, it shows, I mean, we're, we're out of the 100-foot buffer zone.
Use your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Masha.
Right here, Masha.
Talk to the microphone.
Right here, that's the wetlands.
Okay, yeah, uh...
What's the green dotted line?
Yeah, what is the, the green dotted line? I thought that was the wetlands line. No, that's a buff, that's a 100-foot buffer zone. Oh, so it's the blue hash mark?
Yeah, way back off the property, almost, yeah.
Okay.
So we're really not very close to the, well, you know, we're outside of the jurisdiction for a lot of the project of the Conservation Commission. The septic's outside of the 100-foot buffer, outside of the 200-foot riverfront area.
Is that, so the darker purple, that's the riverfront?
Yeah, that's the duck, correct, yep. That's the 200-foot riverfront area.
I do like this plan better than the other one, we are considerably.
I like the other one better.
I think this is a much more...
Denied.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, you know, really because of the water issue, we were forced, but...
And you think that you'll be able to support this number of units with individual wells?
Well, yeah, because each, each, um, each duplex unit will have a well for itself.
I know, but the, the aquifer, aquifer will support that?
Absolutely, this is a sandy ac- high-yield aquifer, yes, absolutely. It would support a town public well.
Maybe the town should buy it.
You guys don't have to sprinkle these, do you?
No.
You still going, Masha?
No, I don't have any more questions.
All right, um, anyone from the public? You want to see the new, you want to see this, new, new plans, you're welcome to take them, look at them, take mine, because they're probably going to get changed a thousand times.
They're much better.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, the added, oh, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, Dubon, would like to speak.
Oh, okay. You can take mine off, go ahead. All right, uh, yes, you can have...
Need extra copy, I'll...
Mr. Wall, speak.
Hi, uh, how are you? Thanks very much, uh, and congratulations for your sustainability for the meeting. Um, I have a, I have some questions and concerns a little bit. I don't have any of the information for the soil boreings, the depth of water, or the, um, the info on the, um, analysis of the hazardous materials that it, uh, I, I read the report, I was able to read the report, and I was able to look at the plans that, um, Debbie was able to give me, um, but, but it lacked that kind of information, so if there's a way for us to be able to take a look at that, it would help us understand the...
Think we're going to get that in a two-fold meeting, we'll get it when they do peer review. Um, peer review can obviously request that and probably more than likely request it, um, which you guys will provide to peer review?
Yeah, yeah, I can answer quickly those two points. Uh, in terms of soil boreings, the last set of plans we submitted, I believe, had all the soil boreings on them, but I could be wrong, but we've done probably 25 test pits out there. Um, some of them were for purpose of septic, some were for the purpose of environmental investigation. Um, and we, the, the water table on most of the site is very deep, greater than 10 feet. Portions close to the wetland, it, it, it may be right around 10 feet deep, but the soils are all beautiful, gravelly, sandy material. Um, in terms of the environmental investigation, we did do, uh, Riverhawk Environmental did an assessment of the property.
Speak up a little more, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, Riverhawk Environmental, my company, did an assessment of the property. I believe we installed six boreings, we sampled the soil, we sampled the groundwater, and we did those envi- those test pits, excuse me, those test pits that I just discussed.
Do you guys have to keep monitoring while it's going?
There's no, there's no requirement to, we didn't find any contamination, we didn't find anything that was reportable. That report was submitted to the Mass DEP and is part of the public record. Um, so, so far we, you know, there's no, there's been no signs of, um, historic contamination that we've found at this point.
Right, I, I just would like to see those, so I haven't, I haven't had access to any of that, and if you could tell me where it is so that we could get a copy, that'd be good.
Or submit a copy to the, the building department, or the...
See, also, also, also we don't have any design for the, the septic or the wells?
The...
Get that?
The, these plans are...
These are very preliminary plans.
Very conceptual and preliminary in nature. We submitted the previous proposal, we submitted more detailed plans, but it changed because of the inavailability of water. So these plans, we, before we got too heavily into the design, we, we wanted to make sure the concept was agreeable. Um, now that I think I'm fairly comfortable that that, that it is, uh, we're going to prepare detailed plans of the septic, the stormwater, all the test pits will be logged on the plans and shown on the plans, the locations where they're taken will be shown. Um, in terms of the environmental report, that's part of the Mass DEP public record, you can search their website by address and find the, the records for this site and, and that our investigation is in there.
Can I just say something to this real quick, too? On the, on the septic and the wells, the, the 21E, we didn't need to, but I, I gave it to the building department back when we did it, so they do have a full copy of that, that 21E. Um, as for the wells and the septic, they'll be designed to Title V, and there'll be peer review. The individual wells, every one of them has to be drilled, tested, sampled, or you don't get a building permit, so...
Right.
Like the protection for like the public and everything built into the building process, because we can't, when we go for that process, if we can't get a well, we can't, we don't have house. So we, but we did, like I said, we have done extensive research out there.
That, that's really helpful, uh, let me know, let me, uh, state what my concern basically is, um, in terms of the river, because DEP, um, has it classified as category 5D because of the high nitro- nitrate, uh, loading. So it's very likely, I mean, because part of that, that requirement is that they do a total daily maximum load for it, it's likely that everybody in town will have to do some work on our septic system, so just, just kind of a heads up that, um, the design should include nitrogen removal so that there's no contamination there, because despite, you know, your, you know, you can have highly permeable soils and be far enough away from the wetland to not contaminate it. Spring Brook runs right through there, runs straight to the Jones River, so that would be my concern, and we, that's what, that's kind of what we're, we'll be taking a look at, um, to make sure that, because we're doing an awful lot of work to improve the river as it is.
Very good, thank you. Anything more, Mr. Wall?
Please.
Uh, but we're, we're interested in the stormwater design, but we'll wait for all of that, I, I, I understand what he's saying in terms of where they're at, so I appreciate all that, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else on TV, or on Zoom, or on the public want to speak?
I'm here from town council, I just wanted to make sure that the board didn't have any questions for me that they'd like to pose to council.
Oh, that's right, sorry, I didn't notice you there. Um, anyone want to ask town council anything?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Uh, we're good.
Okay, the only thing I would have is, uh, I'm sure the applicant knows, um, there is a requirement under 716 CMR 56.04 subsection 5, identifying the eligibility certifying authority when there's any substantial change to a project, I just wanted to make the board aware of it in case they see any communications in that regard, that would be why they're sending out anything like that.
Yeah, LA Associates, who's handling the 40B part of this, notified the state, they got, they got an email saying that this isn't a substantial change and it falls under our initial approval, so we, like I say, we have done that.
Right.
Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't a question, I was just noting to the board in case they saw something come across, um, that relates to that, and that's would be the reason why they would expect to see a change with the alteration in the initial design.
Thank you. Anyone else, public? Very good, um, where do you want to continue to, because I know, now you guys kind of have a feel. We still got to do peer review, which is, it's going to take you more than a month. Oh, sorry, there you go, talk to the mic so we can hear you. I guess...
Yeah, so we can have everything in within a month or less, hopefully, two weeks if, Glenn...
When is the next, can't do March, April has what?
March.
A bunch stacked on the first.
April, yeah, April 3rd, we have four. No meeting on the 17th, we have one on...
I mean, I guess in theory we could stack them on the April, but we probably wouldn't hear anything, though. We would basically just open and say, pick your peer review, put some money in the kitty, be on your way.
Well, can we pick our...
Because we have 33 cushion... Because we have 33 cushionals.
Can we select our peer reviewer now and then, once we get the plans in?
Yeah, without a doubt, so you guys could already be, putting money in the kitty, picking your peer review.
Yeah, we'd like to do that, yeah.
Submit it. You don't have to see us in mid-round and then go, listen. Yep, exactly, that way if you hit a hiccup mid-stream and, or you guys are battling out something, go, we'll just hammer that out in front of the board. Or you say, alright, I'm willing to take this loss or take this gain, and then you come in front of the board, because the same day we're going to have both you guys fully loaded and ready to roll, and them fully loaded, ready to roll in reverse. And if the two seem to stream together, seems to lock in, whatever, whatever battles out, battles out. In theory, you could be in May, and you could be locked and loaded. Oh, yeah, directly, yeah, 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 yeah. It's actually why we have you guys pick it, so that we're going, hopefully we get more of a smoother, not constant battle on every single issue, because you're going to get two engineers that might hate each other, you know what I mean? And then they just go, well, you're off by three meters and you're off by 1.5 meters, so. We don't want you guys to be buddy-buddy, but we guys don't want to be complete enemies. We can, they'll be stacked just like you were tonight.
Yeah, because we have 60 country club way.
Well, the problem is we're going to be in a huge review then. It'll be a full review.
Yes.
I mean, you guys can do it, it's up to you guys.
May 15th.
We have 60 country club way on May 1st?
Yeah.
Neither do we.
How about May 15th, at 7 o'clock, you'd be the first?
You'd be first, you'd be only currently.
If we got our plans done and we went through peer review, and anybody who wanted to comment from conservation and everything, if we hashed all of that out by then, is that something we could maybe get done in one meeting if you guys are all in agreement?
I'd say in the perfect world.
I don't see why not.
But at the same time, if you, like you said, if you and your peer review are kind of locked, locked in step and pretty good, and at the same time you have the, you know, the letter from the fire department saying, everything's kosher, you know, a letter from, because if not, we're going to request it in a different way.
Can I tell you something about that? I went to them like you told me the last time, and they were all, I don't know what they're talking about, we comment on it, we don't give letters. I went to the fire department and the police department.
I mean, if you want, I can request the letter stating.
Yeah, well, no, they said, because that's what they said, when they request for comments, we make our comments. I said, well, they're asking us to get letters or something.
Well, I guess that, that is kind of, so what happens is, an email comment, unless we get an email, something written down.
An email to Deb would work.
It's all hearsay, you know what I mean? Oh, yeah, we got a letter from the fire, they said it's the greatest thing in the world.
Yeah, we approved something.
And then I bumped into him at lunch, and he's like, I never even seen the plan.
Well, no, they said they commented on the project both, and they go, we've already made our comments and they're there, so.
Yes, that's all we need is a simple email, something that's basically written down either with a hard copy or someone's name. That says, you know, it's coming from the Kings of Fire Department saying, yes, we've, we've commented our comments, we seem fine with everything that's there. Because you haven't put fire hydrants in.
Well, I mean, I.
I know, I'm just saying.
I don't know what we're doing with that.
That's why we need, that's why we need their comments, because I don't battle fires.
Jason should get that stuff anyway, right?
Yeah. When it comes to the peer review, leave it thrown in there, if you don't have it on there, peer review will catch it.
I don't know where the town would be at even with hydrants, so, you know, I mean, we have to go through that with, you know.
And that hits the reason we need either a letter or a comment or an okay, you know, even simple as a police comment, yeah, we're fine with it. We don't care. And they usually don't, because it's not very long of a road.
Right, yeah.
Obviously, Conservation Commission is going to have something to say, but it looks like through peer review, it might be, might be picked up.
But the comments you need from you guys is the comments, can you guys request them? Because when I asked, they said, they request them, we give our comments and.
Yeah, but, so then, what?
I request them all.
Yeah, so mid-stream, when you guys throw, give this to peer review where you guys feel you're at, pretty strongly, give us something so that we could broadcast it out, because if we don't see it, I won't see it, if she doesn't see it.
Keep in touch.
Then we have no way of broadcasting anything out until day of meeting, and then we go, because half the time we get stuff day of or day before, and it's like, oh, why?
The sooner that I get it, the quicker they'll get to review.
Yeah, don't worry, it's very common.
How does the public participate in peer review?
They don't.
They just got to come to the next meeting?
Correct, and then they can discuss how, what they feel their statement is off of the two of them battling it out. And they can say, oh, we don't agree with this ourselves, and I get that.
On the 40B end of it, what do you, I know, so we'll do, I wanted to wait on the pro forma, because we're going to just edit it, and LA Associates is going to do that for me, but in that packet, you're going to want to see that as well as the state now for this part of the process.
Yep.
Alright, so we'll have that done, and we just can submit that to Debbie all as we're going?
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Please do, yeah. Yeah, definitely, the sooner it's better.
She can shoot out an email to us if need be, or she just gives it out to the locals, and even Mr. Talman and his group can take a quick look at the pro forma, no problem. Because in the end, if everything goes kosher to a degree, someone has to basically outline and make the decision, which is usually a five, six-page packet with all of your.
Yeah, once we get through you.
Special permits you want, variances you want, and all that stuff. Your pro forma will be in there.
Unless you know that, too, after you guys go.
Yep.
They, they have to finally say, like, as for even the units, they can move those around in their final, because they don't like how, where we place them.
Yep, we just don't want, we just don't want the units basically side by side.
No, no, and they don't even.
They just need to be blended in there, like, we have no idea where they are.
Yep.
That's all. Pretty simple. Anyone else quickly before I move on to the last thing?
Make sure you maintain the roads, that, that would help.
Glenn, I'll need a waiver, too.
Just an email, continue. Alright.
Thank you.
Last thing of the night.
You want to keep it?
Yeah, you can keep it, yeah, yeah, why not? We're going to get another round.
Okay.
No, I don't think you have to redo things.
You don't have to do that, you just have to approve the minutes, right?
No, we have us.
Any meeting, any minutes to approve?
No, hold on, hold on, we have someone informal coming in front of us. Oh, sorry. Alright, so, thank you, you can take off. What's your last name again, sorry, attorney?
Preventure.
Preventure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, have a good.
Alright, very good. Next up is just an impromptu informal request by Mr. Stangalini. Oh, make a motion to continue to win.
May 1st, I'm sorry, May 15th.
May 15th at 7 o'clock.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, see you then. Do some homework prior, that way it just shows up and. Bring in peer review, alright. Now, informal request by Mr. and Mrs. Stangalini, 46 Rabith Road, requesting the board opinion on Z B A case number 2007 as to whether changes to the special permit would be considered minor or major modification.
Hi there, good evening. My husband Sean is actually on Zoom.
Alright, very good.
So this should be pretty quick. He was here some time ago. This is a minor modification to an approved home building in 46 Rabith Road. I live in Plymouth, 3 Beach Road, and we purchased this land, it was purchased by a husband and wife, a couple, and when we, we kind of inherited the plans, and we have two kids, so there's four of us and two dogs. I'm sorry, what's your name? Essel Stangalini, and Sean is my husband, who is joining us virtually.
Are you guys at the property currently?
No, it's, it's a piece of land. It's been approved, though, what we're requesting is just to increase the square footage, so it's approved for 1,000, so what we're going to do is make it bigger by adding a second floor. So it's not changing the structure, it's just adding a second floor.
I don't have, I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, you tore down the original structure, correct? Or it was torn down?
It's, I mean, it's not livable, it's, it's.
Do you have the old special permit with you?
I do, I have there.
If, if I may, can you folks hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, my name's Sean, so, just to back up just a little bit, there was a question about the structure, so the, the old structure is still there, so we already went through the process of getting it approved by Conservation, et cetera, in the Z B A. The plan was to knock the present structure down and then build a 1,000-square-foot structure. And those are the plans that Essel had mentioned that we had inherited. But as we began to sort of learn more about the plans, we realized that the house probably would be too small for us, because the, we have two kids, plus my wife and myself, and two dogs. So what we are hoping to do is to ask the board, is if we can build up and add a story, so it'd be a total of 2,000 square feet, but not changing the footprint.
But you have, what's currently there, a one-bedroom?
So, yeah, so right now, where the, that cabin is, I think in total that might be like 600 square feet, there's a, like, an outhouse, and then there's a shed. I think in total it's about 1,000 square feet, I understand what's currently there, I don't know the exact math.
Do you have, you don't have the, you don't have the original permit? I know this permit's from four years ago, that's why I can't remember it, I kind of remember.
So I did provide it to, when you say permit, approved the board?
Yeah, but you got to prove, you got to prove for what you asked that day. The only reason I'm asking is.
I did provide a document for Debbie earlier this week, or perhaps it was later last week, that indicated the board had accepted their initial plans, the Z B A.
Yeah, we had, in the, in the decision, it says, conditions must be met by Conservation. Have you guys gone through Conservation and talked to them at all? Do you have a letter from them?
Yes, so that's all been approved, and we have, you know, a document that indicates that. It has gone through the entire process.
You have a letter from them?
Yes, there's an order of conditions that we have to meet to do the structure, and of course, we agreed to it.
I think the, the big, the only problem I have is like, I can't, I can't determine if it's minor or major, because I don't have a site plan.
Sure, I, we did provide Debbie perhaps a week or so ago, actually, my wife might have it.
No, that's just the building plan, I need a site, which is like the whole, let me see if I can find it. The only reason I ask is, if, when you go up, I don't know how big the property is, when you go up in bedrooms, you're required to have parking. No, I understand that, but that sounds like you're going to a three-bedroom, and with a three-bedroom, that usually means you need a bigger septic, more parking.
So if I may.
That's, that's my only concern.
Sure, the initial plans was for a three-bedroom, that's been approved.
It was a three-bedroom?
Yes, and the septic was, is approved to handle that as well. We've had Grady Engineering, well, actually, we haven't, the previous owners had, the Grady Engineering folks came out, engineered it. We have a special sewer system that, to meet Conservation's requirements.
Give me one second.
Sure.
I've been sworn Conservation said it was a substantial change.
That just the last name, from Matt Penella?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
That's in everyone's packet. Doesn't it say that?
Alright, yeah, so I. Yeah, I'm getting from the building inspector and from the Conservation Agent that they both feel that this is not a minor, minor. Not a minor modification.
Just from my own education, what sort of delineates the difference, so we can understand?
I guess in theory, it's the board's idea and what we feel from those that, since we're not specialists in Conservation or building inspectors, we have to take in outside, basically, our, you know, our building inspector is also our zoning enforcer. And then Mr. Penella, who is the Conservation Agent, he is basically our ears to, you know, what's going on. And I know the area you're working on is very sensitive of an area, I think you're right next to a pond, I think it's Smelt Pond.
Yes, they did, so, just so I know, so we're not changing the square footage, we're only going upwards?
You're not square, well, you're not changing, you're not changing the footprint, but you are changing the square footage.
The footprint, pardon me, yes.
I think that's the issue, that it's like you're doubling the square footage.
Yes.
Of the structure. I mean, it's not like, that's a significant increase. I, we agree that the footprint remains the same, but the increase in square footage, I think.
How does that impact Conservation if Conservation's approved for 1,000 for my own?
I'll read, I'll read it to you. I saw, I saw, this is from Mr. Penella. "I saw an informal filing, RE 46 Rabith Road, for tomorrow night's Z B A meeting. The board should know that any deviation would also trigger the need for a Conservation Commission filing. While the foundation footprint is the same, the plan of record specifies 1,008 square feet, and the dramatic increase in square footage would constitute an increase in property use." So that's their determination.
Okay, alright, that, and that's Conservation, they get a lot of power there.
It's just the intensity of the use has been.
To be, to be truthful, I mean, and Mrs. Silva brought up a good thing, is you guys adding a second floor, the neighbors that, you know, or that knew about it or knew what was happening at the original meeting four years ago, knew it was only, only to be a single-story structure, and now you guys are trying to put a second story on it, basically without anybody knowing. So I'm not saying this would take you forever to do, but if you were to file and get it moving, you know, if everything, everything was put together right, it shouldn't take very long. If every, if everything seems up, the up and up. But, but again, your, your biggest problem is less us and more Conservation, because you guys are right on that pond. So basically, and I'm pretty sure the drop-off is pretty major, too, so everything kind of pitches to the pond, if I remember correctly?
I don't know what the definition of a drop-off is, but it is.
So like, if you were to walk off the back, if you walked out the back of your house toward the pond, it's probably a gradient better than 10 feet to the water, am I correct? Or maybe 15 feet, so everything in your yard basically pitches right into the pond, does it pitch to Rabith Road?
It's set back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In a flood zone.
I think I know that property.
It's at the end.
Is it at the very end? Oh, yeah, the one on the left? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, that's just my feeling, but like, again, doesn't mean you guys couldn't blast us out, you guys already have almost 95% of all the paperwork done. Only thing you guys don't have, I didn't see, that's what I was looking for, was your actual plot plan, you're on the ground, where your septic system is, you know, which is what Conservation is going to want the most, where your parking is, because if you're doing a three-bedroom, you got to make sure you have at least three parking spots that are dedicated, I don't know if you're making a garage, which I don't think you are. So you have to have that all, I don't even know how big your property is, is it more than an acre, less than an acre?
It is, it's a little bit over a half an acre.
Yeah, so it's tiny, it's like 22,000 square feet. Yeah, I.
You could argue 2,000 square feet is a small home, too, and the Conservation's already seen, that we haven't changed the bedrooms, it's still three-bedroom, so the sewer that was approved through Conservation, it's a.
You don't have sewer, you have, you have Title V, right?
Uh, no, well, so it's a special, they asked for a special septic system?
Yeah, like a nitrogen-loading one?
I, I'm not sure exactly the technology of it, but my understanding is it's a, we're not, I understand we're putting on an extra 1,000 square feet, but it's still a three-bedroom home, and the sewer that was approved for a three-bedroom home with a, with a little less square footage is now the same sewer system, it's still three bedrooms.
Alright, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, I definitely do. I don't know, you guys can decide, I think it's a major, a major modification, I don't think it's major, meaning it's major for the zone, I'm just saying it's a major difference from the, the original special permit, that's just my understanding. I don't think it's, I don't think you're. I'm just saying it's a major difference from the, the original special permit. That's just my understanding. I don't think it's, I don't think you're, I'm, I'm trying to be, say this in a nice way. I think it's a major modification to what was originally implicated in the first permit, but I don't think your project is a major, a major problem for the area. I just think it just takes a quick relook and a quick, you know, if any neighbors go, whoa, this is not, we, we, we were, we were cool with, you know, four years ago. We don't, we didn't know why this house didn't get built four years ago. But doesn't mean you guys can't do this in a, in a swift manner. Because if everything was clean and neat, to be perfectly honest, it, it might be a single meeting. It may be two. Like if you go to Conservation and they give you a letter saying, this is what we want, here's all the lines, which already should be already in your original packet from your original permit, it should go pretty, pretty easy.
So all, all those lines are already, have already been drawn out and we're going to put stilt socks and all those.
Yep, I just, I, I don't have it in front of me, so I, I don't know. I just have the, I only have the findings and the decision. I don't have the packet. I only have your, your, that way you want to build your house. I don't have that site plan. Like, I don't know where the septic's going. I don't know any of that.
Yeah, where the driveway is.
None of it's, none of it's here, so.
Well, then I think that the Conservation probably didn't get it.
So that's, that's kind of, so to help you out, so that the guy working the building can get out of here. You obviously have a finding decision. I, I, we'll get, we'll take a quick preemptive vote. I think it's a major modification. It's basically you guys burn it through Conservation Commission. They say everything looks the same as before. Or can you scoop this a little left or scoop this right? Things have changed in four years. Maybe new laws have been implemented. Who knows? It's been four years. And then from there, the building department checks it over, says everything's kind of the same. This is what they're going to require. In other words, your parking spots are put in a purpose spot. I don't even know if you guys can move pavement down because it's such a small zone and it's so close to the, to the pond. So these things will just have to be on your plot plan so that when you come in front of us, there's no reason for you guys to leave. It's just, everything is there. Information's there. Where, where do you stand? You know what I mean? You don't want any hiccups. Again, I have no problem with the building. It looks nice. It's just I don't know what, where it is on the, on the property. I have no idea. So that's all you would need. I think it would be pretty self, pretty, pretty quick.
Okay.
I'll ask the board. I could be wrong. Panel of the board, Bob, what do you think? Minor or major?
I agree with you, Paul.
I, I think it's a major. I mean, are you planning on putting new foundation in or using the existing?
The only thing that we're doing is just adding a second floor.
So you're going to use the existing?
You're going to use the existing foundation or you're going to raise it down to the ground and put a new foundation in?
No, so the, you mean what's currently there?
Yeah, you use the foundation that's currently in the ground.
All right, so there is no, so we haven't started building yet. Presently, what's, what's on the property is a cabin and it's close to the water. And then so three or four years ago, they approved, the, the board approved Conservation with their requirements as well, approved to, to move a found, a, a home with a foundation for the bed.
So, so in other words, you need, you need, yeah, you need a whole site plan. So you need a new foundation. So just a quick site plan.
Well, the site plan was already approved. Everything, the, the original three-bedroom home that with the site plan was already approved.
I get it.
Yeah, just, just basically, you're going back to square one, bring all your stuff, back to the building, let them approve it, go to Conservation, approve it. It comes to us.
It should be relatively quick.
Right, because you only have an approval right now for a one-story house, okay? I think it's in your best interest to get an approval for a two-story house. And that's true.
Sure, that's, that's why we're here.
That's right. And I don't think we feel like we can give that to you just willy-nilly. They, they gave you a one-story approval. You want two stories. I don't think it'll be a big deal. I don't.
It's just going to be a time approach.
That's all.
Yeah, that's right. I think we had spoken to some, some of the builders and their perception was that it would be a minor.
Well, that's a builder for you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. I get it.
The pond's there.
Yeah, that's the problem.
The pond's there.
But again, so, Marsha, you think it's major also?
I think it's major.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You guys should, almost all this homework should be in the, in the building department. And like I said, you run it through everybody, get it to her quick and redo the permit. It should be on, within a couple, you can be on the tail end of a meeting, one of these long ones again.
I can help you out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Putting everything together. We can talk. Thank you.
No, no problem.
I know you guys are.
Press for time? Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll do minutes at a later point, or do you need me to get these minutes done?
We can do them later.
You sure? Sean, thank you. Sorry.
I get them. I approve them.
Okay, all right, we'll do. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I gave a point to you. Yeah.
I already read some.
I did. No, we don't have to do anything about it. All right. Motion to accept minutes for December sixth, two, twenty twenty-three.
I moved to accept the minutes of December, what was it?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, December.
Can I get a second? I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, done. Next up, minutes for January seventeenth. How'd that look?
I think I'm there. I move that we approve the minutes for January seventeenth.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, minutes for February seventh.
Oh, I moved that we accept the minutes for February seventh.
It's only one page. Hold on. I don't think I was here.
It was just Bob. We continued.
Yeah, you were here.
That was just Debbie.
Oh, absent.
And why wasn't he here?
All right, so you can't make the motion. Bob, Bob, you make the motion?
I make a motion to accept February seventh.
Twenty twenty-four. I guess so moved because you were, you were the only person, so so moved. You get, you get.
I second and I approve.
That's a new one.
Wood power.
We'll see if that gets appealed. All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Committee of one.
All in favor? Aye, good night, everyone.